Maybe you could just say your names and
Sure.
And who you're with, or who you're with, who you're representing, Amy?
Stephanie Klawke, GEA president.
Everett Charleston, GEA vice president.
John Davis, GEA negotiations chair.
Hi, welcome. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for having us come. What we're here to present is information from the Certified Staff Survey that was sent out on July 12th, so. Big thank you to start off, all the hours that administrators and board members have put in here. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the GEA for all of that, so important to start off there. When we sent out the survey, it was for these three main goals and to work hand in hand with the district and administrators and school board. The goal number one was to collect the staff voices. And I felt the turnout was, we had eighty-two staff members that responded to the survey in about, you know, twenty-four hours, or the weekend of July. We also wanted, goal number two, to return to work safely. That's just, I think that's a common goal been said in this room and from other meetings. And then obviously, student learning is always at the top of our priorities. So those three goals of sending out the survey. And we did hear the last school board meeting that you had that. And just critical information, we want to say thank you for acknowledging that in this space. So we're just here to present a few of the main things and then some trends that we've noticed. So let me go to the next slide, Gil. This was the first question that after returning, do you feel safe returning to work? And again, this was on July 12th. I think the numbers speak for themselves, but just the more information that comes out, I think that undecided, it just makes staff feel. But that forty-two percent, the unknowns are really just maybe a little bit, that speaks for itself. So we can go to the next slide there. And John, do you want to do this one?
Sure. So some of the data that we really wanted to make aware to the district and we're also interested as we try to provide a voice to staff. We only did our certified staff, just so you know, this does not have any of the support staff and that's all we're able to send that out to. So if the question were why, and this was to all certified staff, so it was not just based off association membership. So out of the data that we collected, we found that about a third had some type of underlying health condition. We were very concerned that we were not prying into anyone's personal and we felt that the GEA was able to glean information from our certified staff because of the nature in which Stephanie did an outstanding job of presenting questions and doing that. We felt that we got very accurate information through that. So with that, about a third of the staff had some type of underlying health condition that they felt. We didn't ask them what it was. We just asked, do you have something that you felt was possibly in a compromising setting? The next slide, if we could go to that, was do you live with someone that has an underlying health condition? And one of the things that we had some discussion on, and this could be, it could be perhaps a parent. You know, we didn't ask, was it your spouse, or was it, maybe it's a child, could somebody that you're in contact with, do they have that? And one of the interesting components that we found out about this was this data that we received was not necessarily overlapping. In fact, we found that it was broader than that. So for example, if Everett had an underlying condition as a staff member, but his wife didn't, I may have answered that I didn't, but my wife did, and we actually, it's not that same third you could be looking at. We think we found that it could be up to fifty percent have a condition that either they or someone else has something that they felt could be a concern with their health and well-being. Okay, next one.
I think we updated it in the last hour, so I don't know if, but we can just go through. This was just another, we had surveyed this, but it sounds like the district has made a decision about that one. So if we can go to the next slide. And I think everyone had access to these charts by memory, so we can just kind of move over these in which buildings. And then these are the other survey questions that were on there, that were eighty-two individual responses. So we're not going to obviously go over all of those. And I would like to point out, we're working with administration on coming up with those answers to that. And that's been really wonderful to know that that's being looked at. And I think that the voices are being heard, so thanks, those of you who are helping us with that. If we go to the next, this was just kind of as we reopen, the students and then the staff and the faculty, and then the challenges that we'll kind of cover later on in the presentation. So here were the trends from the survey responses, where human bandwidth, kind of global citizenship, that's a portrait of a graduate one, and then personal safety unknown. So Everett, if you wanted to cover the human bandwidth, I think that'll be nice.
Yeah, go to the next one. So when it comes to human bandwidth, like what are we asking our staff to do and what can they provide? One of the biggest things that when we look at the plan that you guys are, I think, coming out with, the parental choice plan, what's going to end up happening is there's going to be, I'm going to end up teaching physics in my classroom, and then I don't know how many kids might be taking physics at home, right? And not just me, but all the other high school teachers, right? So what we're worried about is that you end up having to present quality instruction online. You're going to be spending a large amount of time planning, building for six kids, or sixty kids, it doesn't matter, right? Versus then also planning, providing feedback, working with your kids in your classroom, right? And trying to make sure that within our work time, that we can actually get that done efficiently and effectively, right? So if a kid, my physics is pretty well set up, like the kids can come in, run and take physics if they're in my class. That I don't have to do a ton of work on, right? But the kids that are taken online, there's going to be a lot of work to build, I mean, or in the process of doing that work, right? When you're trying to get ahead of that game. But that's what we're worried about, that in a day's time, can I get all of that work done? That's probably the biggest thing we're worried about, is being able to give the teachers the time to be able to get that done, okay? And in that, I feel like, we feel like different buildings are going to be in different needs, right? So what could happen, what something could look like in the elementary building, could depending on, it's all going to depend on the numbers that come in, right? If you have ten parents that stay home, if you have sixty parents that stay home, right? So if you have a large amount of elementary kids that don't show up, you can pull an elementary teacher, because that elementary teacher can teach K-2, right? But there's only two of us in the building that can teach physics, right? And the other one that teaches physics, she's already busy doing something else. Or the other one that can teach physics is already busy working on something else. So in the high school, we have a little bit of a different problem with highly qualified. That's where we're worried that it's just that that human use is going to get used up, so.
Everett, I got a really unusual question that just came to me, but want to think about is, would there be a possibility on the highly qualified to partner up with some districts to help fill that void?
I think we'll talk about that, John, in our section. But we want to make sure, there's about four minutes left.
Perfect, I was going to ask, thank you.
Yeah, I was just thinking, this is going to be a big issue.
We'll talk about that in our section, yeah.
Yeah, those are probably kind of the big things, human bandwidth, go ahead.
So we can go to the next slide, thanks, Gil. With the global citizenship, just kind of thinking about, based off of survey results, how are we going to protect the most vulnerable? And listening to school board meetings, we've heard like maybe a range of three to six feet, or just, I mean, I think protecting the people and meeting them where they're at, because I think that's the biggest thing. People are all different, but how do we protect the most vulnerable? You know, and how do we lead the way for our community? AIMS is changing, I mean Walmart's coming out with different guidelines and the dots are going down. And then, you know, just preparing for moderate risk or low risk, there are all decisions that need to be made. I think those are just questions that came up in trends in the survey that are valid to point out in a public forum like this. So I think we can go to the next one here.
This was mine. So these are just some other questions that came up. And I think we're going to try and figure them out, but these were just, when you look to, have you guys seen the actual written responses?
Yeah.
These were just some of the high points that came out of that stuff that people worried about. It's just some of the bigger safety unknown questions, so I will read to you, if you guys can read.
Yeah, and then I think, John, this is the next.
Right, so one of the things that we wanted to present in a public forum is we wanted to say, what are the big takeaways that we would like to share with you while we are here? So if we could reverse engineer, that was one of the things that we did in our, in our planning. We want to, we would like to serve as a conduit of voices because we feel that we have the ability and the rapport and have enjoyed that throughout our time as an association here at Gilbert. And as the district looks to make decisions, as administration struggles with things on a constantly changing basis, we would like to be able to provide that assistance. We feel no one knows what it's like being in the schools any better other than the kids. And teachers are there all the time, and we want to be that resource that we can, we can help with that process. The next goal that we had that we wanted to make sure is through, what does that look like? How can we, how can we provide that? And the GEA has a main concern, as you know, of making sure that education happens not only for students, but it's also an environment where our staff can do the job that they need to do. And if they're concerned or worried about that, then we're not doing the job that we need to do. So we would like to utilize a framework that may already be implemented. We do know that we have a teacher faculty advisory group. We also have, through what was done, and I know Gil and Mr. Beecher are very well aware of that, have John Debar through our labor management group that went through contracts. So we do believe we have some opportunities to have those voices discussed. And also want administrators to know that we look forward to being able to work for those autonomous things that were brought up by my colleagues. Each building's going to have those different things, and just because it works one doesn't necessarily mean it works the other. So we're unique and we realize that. And then finally, we know that the goal is, we're going to provide learning throughout the entire year. We just don't know what that entire year looks like. You know, we're all hoping that two weeks into this, we can have a sigh of relief and say, great, let's keep building the momentum and doing the thing that we want. That's what we, and that's what you want too, and we know that. So how do we get there? We do that by having communication and letting you know when we have problems or concerns, but also when we know things are going well and how we can move forward with that. As we think about keeping that ball moving, I know that there's some plans for substitutes. I know that there's some plans, you know, there's been some concerns, that was one of the things that came up on our survey, is what if? We also know that making sure that we, I think one of the big things is, it doesn't matter what John Davis might think or what Stephanie thinks or Everett thinks, we have to realize that people's belief of safety and health is their own. And I may have a different view than my colleagues do, but I have to respect that and be able to share their voices and concerns. And we feel that we're in a position to do that and want to offer that to the district. So the big takeaway is, we're here to help and be a part of this together to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be talking.
Good, good, all right. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you guys.
Hi, Emily, come on in. Come and stand wherever you're comfortable. If it's there, there's an X here that kind of marks the spot.
Well, eight from each side.
I will help you with that.
Please make sure.
It's in a while.
Well, do you want to just tell us, I mean, we know who you are.
I'll tell you who I am. So hello, thank you for allowing me to talk tonight. My name is Emily Olson, and I have a Gilbert grad, as well as two young ones entering in to the fifth grade. And I just wanted to share where I am at with how we go forward, keeping in mind the health and safety of our students, as well as our staff. And I'm very glad to come after the group that just went. I found some of that data scary in some ways. Thank you all for the work you're doing. I know it's challenging. And I don't wish to be in your seat right now, making these decisions, but I also feel I need to share with you where I'm at. As we look at returning to schools and just returning in general to things being slightly more normal, I think we can all agree from all of the research that's done, with little there is because of where we're at timeline wise, it hasn't been that long that we've been dealing with COVID, that there are two mitigation strategies that are key. And those are social distancing and face coverings. And so as you go forward and you think about how we can return to learning, and I understand that there may be ways in which your hands are tied due to recent proclamations that have happened, but I really hope you will consider a plan that allows students to return and maintain social distance. And when I say social distance, I don't mean the adapted three-foot. I'm talking the original intended, still CDC recommended, six-foot distancing. As you're thinking about that, I encourage you to think about the space that you're in right now. Since the beginning of the pandemic, y'all have had your meetings where you are all over six feet apart from each other. You have limited the number of people that can come to these meetings. As we look at some of the plans to return to school, you are asking students and staff and teachers to go into rooms where none of this applies. And if honestly, if y'all want to go forward and have the respect and the trust of those in the community, you have to take what you're doing to protect yourselves into consideration. Because if you now fill a classroom, why should I trust you? Because you're concerned about, it appears you're concerned about your safety, but you'll put children and staff into a large group. The other thing are the highly contentious face coverings. And I understand that some people, I have very strong feelings on this, and I know other people have strong feelings on the other side of things. Based on data, I cannot strongly encourage you enough to require face coverings at all times. Not just in the hallways, not just when we're coming and going, but at all times. The CDC recommends it, the surgeon general has come out and is pleading with people to wear masks. You may be confused if you hear he's not in favor of a nationwide mandate to, a federal mandate to wear masks or face coverings, and that's because of the lack of ability to implement that and regulate that on a federal level, not that you shouldn't be wearing, wearing face coverings. The consensus study that was just put out by the National Academy of Science, Engineering, and Medicine on the reopening of K-12 schools say that ideally, all staff and students, including elementary children, will wear fabric face coverings or surgical masks. And if you read the New York Times article this weekend about a large-scale study that was done in South Korea that is showing, contrary to what many people have been saying, that children are transmitting at a similar rate as adults. Those under ten, they're estimating about half, but some of that has to do with potentially their height because they are breathing at a lower level than adults. But I want you to think about how we interact with children in a classroom. We aren't this tall with children, we're right on their level. And over the age of ten, they are transmitting at a similar risk, or a similar rate of adults. And also the increased amount that people are going to be conversing, interacting is going to really reduce any impact that is on age. Masks protect the other people, they don't protect the person who's wearing them. My children wear masks, they don't have a problem with it, it's their normal. So kids get used to things, we'll have to address issues at times, but they'll get used to it. And my kids are going to wear masks, whether it's mandated or not. So my kids are there, they're going to protect their teachers, they're going to protect the other kids. And I think the schools need to do the same to protect my kids. And I'm not there to yell at them and tell them to put their mask on. And if there's not a rule, I know my son's not going to. But if there is and everybody's doing it, we're keeping each other safe. So if we can all just act as if we have the virus and stay away from each other and wear face coverings, we can do a lot to reduce the prevalence of it. And I know y'all are making the decisions with the best interest of our staff and our students, but it's over fifty percent of the households of the staff that were surveyed have an at-risk person at them. The least we can do for those households is wear a mask or a shield or whatever it is. So I hope we'll take that into consideration. Thank you for all of your doing and have a good night. Good luck.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you. That, no, there's no other folks that had asked to speak about it one. So I think we will move on to the next item, which is oral reports. I think we're starting with administrative reports, Lindsay, why don't you take over?
Okay, I have some things, I'm going to pass it on to Carrie, and then I think we can go around the horn with our administrative team. Wanted to let you know that it is a good situation, come on in, Sam. It is a good situation that we have, that the GEA and I think the district administrative team are working together. We have an administrative team meeting tomorrow, and some of the things that you saw on there, we're going to be talking about and addressing. I know that some of the administrative team have been working with some of the GEA members. And we want to make sure that we're working together to make it a safe environment for not only students, but for staff. I also wanted to let you know that when, I think it was Everett was talking about that human bandwidth, I couldn't agree more. I think that we as a district, and we've talked about this a little bit as an administrative team, when he talked about, not only are we asking our teachers to go ahead and do the face-to-face learning that they will have to have, but they will also have to do that online. I think that we should be looking at someday, whether it be like a Wednesday, I'm going to throw that out, either being a half-day or a full-day, where they could work on that with the onsite teachers. And we could have some of the basically learning that would be going on as far as the remote learning. And I think that we have to have that to meet the guidelines, but what he said is very, very true. We're asking a lot from our teachers and they will, they will step up to the challenge, but I think that we got to give them the time and not make it, I want you to do this job, by the way, I want you to do this job here. And we're looking at that. Just to let you know, a couple things, Plexiglas orders, or Plexiglas, if you take a look, if you get a chance after the meeting, I didn't get around to all the different buildings, but I know that they, the goal was today to have all the Secretary Plexiglas in. If they did, it will be finished by tomorrow. So that's a safety precaution. We have worked with the ordering of the ones for the barriers. And we have some different things that we're able to do. We have some connections, and I got to check this before I go out and say much about it, but we have some connections within our district of people that can help us getting the Plexiglas and getting that to cut. And our custodians know that they are in charge of getting that into the classroom. The orders that we have put out there, they, for the most part, they have been back as far as the cleaning supplies and things. Lynn put out, I believe it was on Friday, is that right Lynn, Friday, that you put out the survey?
It's sent out on Saturday morning.
Okay, well, on Saturday morning, and what it is, is a face mask, a face covering survey about what they're looking at, so that's out there. I wanted to also make you aware of, we had a Zoom today, and they've talked about, Ann Lebo and the group talked about, the teachers need to have PD. And I know that Carrie and I have talked about that as far as if you're teaching online, they want to make sure that there's some type of PD that they have. And I know that we are doing some things, I'm checking into more details. The thing that I left at meeting today with Zoom was, and I didn't get an answer, and I, no one did, and that was what will happen to the kids if they want to go remote as far as athletic eligibility? And I think they just basically did not answer that question. Oh yeah, go ahead.
That actually was a question on the webinar that we were on last Wednesday. Our understanding from the lawyer was they are eligible.
Whether you're online or onsite, you are attending school full-time.
Okay, that's good to hear.
If someone were to have that desire for that mix.
I think they kind of left that open today.
The DE definitely left it open. They said they can just get back, so that's it.
That's good to know.
It was your lawyers that made.
It's also with IESB policy, they just amended policies, they left it open.
Good, that's good to know. And I think I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Carrie for some updates on her part of it.
Yeah, I do, let's first, if you look at the one that has the yellow on it first, that's, this is updating what we are proposing now for that hybrid model. Our hybrid really is a parent choice. You can see that it is, you know, each of those three choices. We did put in the traditional homeschool model if somebody, if somebody wanted to go that route, because I mean, that is a choice, so we want to make sure we're not leaving anything out. And that just comes from, you know, the discussions that we've already had. I also, on page two, I didn't color code this, but for the old or the other hybrid model, I didn't have not taken this off yet, I think we need to be, I'd like us to be a little careful in the fact that if the state would come back to us and say that we have to go to a certain capacity. I think we want to have, now, with what the state has come out with, our AB model will not work. Our AB, AB, because you have to be in school fifty percent, students have to be in school fifty percent of the time within two weeks. With the way we set ours up, because we've got every other day with a day off to get, you know, to manage the online and the remote, or the online and the onsite. One thing, and we can talk about this, we don't have to, we don't have to change this portion of it now. We can talk about this, and we haven't even talked about this administratively, so I want you to know that. This is just, go ahead.
Can I just make a suggestion then for this, what you've added, which is our parents' choice, that we'd say hybrid learning hyphen parents' choice or something, just so that it.
Just to make.
Because when I, I was kind of confused.
Okay, no, I will just add under hybrid, I'll just put a heading under there.
Parents' choice.
You bet.
Yeah, just sort of a different change.
I just want to put in your, and I think under the, under the hybrid model, we will, under the other hybrid model, we will put state mandated if, if we have to move to a certain capacity.
Yeah, just to make it clear.
But just to put this in the back of your head, when we think about that, we're going to have to be a little more creative, and we might have to think about doing a complete A-week and a complete B-week. And then that way, we could say our students were in school, but we don't have to, we don't have to do that logistically now, I just wanted to put that in the back of your mind. So that, that portion, once we're done this evening, we will update this, I will make those changes, thank you for that. And this will go, this portion will go back up on our website.
Just, yeah, just make sure we've got the descriptors in there because
Yes.
we're throwing a lot of information out at parents. I think the simpler we can keep it, the better. But I, I understand the reason to keep digital, but let's just call that fifty percent model or.
We need to just put if mandated by the state. I think we just, that that is just, if we have to go, that's the only reason I say.
It's not a choice, yeah.
So that's that portion. The other thing, I have a copy for you, the other bigger, I think it's thirteen pages, is the survey that we are going to be sending out tomorrow. Along with this survey, we are going to attach pictures of, from each building to show what a classroom may look like or could look like. We're not going to show every classroom, we don't have every classroom set up, but we can show examples of, from each building. And I, I have some of those pictures, I'm getting the rest of them, and we'll have all of that as part of this. This, this survey serves multiple parts and pieces to the return to learn plan. We are, we are, we are not, this is not an anonymous, I know we talked about that before. You'll notice we are asking for first and last names of the student and then the building that they'll be in. But the big piece is the next question, which is on the third page, where it says, at this current time, what are your plans for your child's education this coming fall? Now, this is not, if, if they answer, they're just choosing where they're thinking now. We're telling them, this is for planning purposes. I will tell you, this is very similar to the survey that AIMS sent out, I mean, question-wise. The next question then asks, how strongly do they feel? And that gives us, okay, how, how good is, I mean, where are they with this data? And if they can say, I strongly, I strongly this way, I'm strongly that way. And then the next part, if they're unsure. And then the next part, if they're unsure, what are those factors that they're thinking about? And that's going to help us and what do we need to get out? What is, what are those pieces that we're missing? We did add a question about registration just to kind of help move that along because registration really doesn't have anything to do with, and now that I say that, I need to add that in that descriptor, that register regardless of what your option is. So I need to add that in that descriptor, so that. The rest of it, really, we have a piece on the social, emotional behavior and mental health piece, how families are feeling about that. We also added again the questions about internet connectivity because, and we wanted to get, we got a little bit more specific and we had those questions earlier, but we did it anonymously. So now we really want to have that attached to name, well, never mind, we did a little bit anonymous and a little bit not, anyway, doesn't matter. The last one, the last set of questions have to do with if we have to go to continuous remote learning, that if we would have to go to that due to whatever. Now, we know from the DE that that playing field has changed a little bit. We don't just on our own decide we're going to go remote learning. We don't do that with Story County majors anymore. We have to, we have to go to the state and we have to say, hey, this is where we're at, we feel we need to close or however that's going to work. That would be a Lindsay deal. But knowing that, we learned again, and I don't know what you guys heard on Wednesday at your, when you had your ISB, whether that's called conference or webinar thing, we don't, we will not have that criteria or matrix until the first week of August that the DE is providing us. So anyway, we do want to be on top of what families might need for remote learning. And then the last one just has to do with the, what we would use remote learning wise, Google Classroom, the CSO and the Google Hangouts, how parents feel navigating those because then that will help us in knowing what do we need to provide moving forward. So that's where we are with this.
How long would they have to complete this?
Oh gosh, that's very. Yes, we are, this is what we, this is what our timeline is. Gosh, thank you for asking that question because I have that all written out here. It will go out tomorrow and it will be open through July 29th. So it'll be open for a week. And we will be sending out reminders, we'll send a reminder out Thursday and then Monday. From there, then on July, oh no, I said that wrong. It'll be open, it'll, it'll close on July 28th, which is Tuesday, it'll close Tuesday evening. Wednesday, we will have the form available, Wednesday, the 29th, we will have the form available for those families that decide that they want to go remote. Now, I, right now, what, what I'm proposing is that we have that open for two weeks. That's July 29th to August 12th. That's from Wednesday to two weeks the next Wednesday. That is after the school board meeting. That will be a Google form that families will fill out, will have a signature placed in there because I'm a little nervous just clicking a button. Cassie and I are going to work on that together. And then from there, it will go, she will put those, those students in Infinite Campus and they will be flagged as remote learners. So then our admin can pull that up and they'll see who those are and she will do that in real time. So she will have access to that information on the remote learner form. That will run a semester.
And that's the commitment?
That's the commitment form. That's the commitment form saying, I am committing, we want our students to be, to be fully online, doing that remote learning.
For a semester.
For a semester. So what we'll do, that would be until, I want to say January 15th. We will come back in December, December 1st and reach out to those families again and if they want to continue, they will fill out a second form that says they want to go into the second semester that way. If they don't, they don't have to fill a form out, we'll just record that and they'll just be back in, back online or back onsite, second semester. That's, we've talked a lot about what about, we've said we don't want families to move from online to onsite, just back and forth. But if a family comes into, if you're onsite and now you've had a big breakout in your, you know, whatever, something's happened in your family and it would be more conducive for that family to go online, they can fill that form out for that semester, but we're not going to go back and forth. That's kind of where we have landed on that. I will tell you that, that, that two-week window, if you feel that we need to make, extend that a little bit, you're not going to, I wouldn't say Ames is doing theirs through August 17th. I don't know that you'd want to go any later than that. I think that the people that are strongly committed to doing the, the remote learning, they're going to fill that out pretty darn quick. So that's going to, that's going to really help us, or help, I should say, our building principals in knowing who we're going to, who's, you know, how they're going to put classes together. But anyway, that's, that's where that is. How do you feel about that? What questions do you have?
I got a couple of questions, just on the, you know, taking, it says, at this current time, what's your plans? And then, you know, really, we're, really, the commitment date is August 12th, from what I'm hearing. We've got to know set in stone by August 12th, that's when the commitments are due, is that correct?
That would be correct.
At some point, I think we need to, just because at this current time almost makes it sound like you could still, we got to lay out some sort of timeline, I think, somewhere in this.
We can put, we can put the exact timeline that we just had.
I just think that would help. Just because again, if you're, there's still be some on the fence and that way they made it today, but they also want to know, what's my true backup? What is my hard line?
No, I think that's a great idea, Andrew, thank you.
And then the other piece of this too, I know at some point, I think we got to put in here what that commitment timeframe looks like.
Yep.
And again, we talked about a semester, well, just talking today with Stacy, there, I think the K through 8s on trimesters.
We still, I think that we've all talked about it together and we were, I think everybody committed to saying that, that January date would be okay, just because if you think about, I'm going to use the elementary as an example, if, I mean, those, the remote learners are going to be doing the same, I mean, not exactly the same, they're going to be in the same place in curriculum-wise. So that transition, there isn't like a, oh, we had a semester. And that's where, when Everett talked about that planning time or how are we making sure that our teachers, the teachers that are teaching remotely and the teachers that are teaching online, first of all, some of that's going to be driven by the numbers of how many remote learners we actually have. But those people, we, those people are going to have to have time to collaborate because we're going to want, we want those kids to be in sync. If they're not, when they do come back, we don't want to build a bigger, we don't want to build a learning gap there. We want them to be on the same pace.
So you're saying the admin team is unified with a semester?
Yes. Would you all say that? I mean, that's how we talked the other day. I want to make sure, I hope I'm not speaking on turn.
Mike, I don't even see everybody. Mike, Amy, looks like Cindy's on, Stacy. I think Mike tried to.
Yeah, I can be flexible. I mean, you know, whether they come in at trimester or the semester, from my standpoint, I think we can be flexible. It, it, it might be nice, just thinking about it to, I mean, things change a lot from August to January, maybe, maybe we say a quarter, you know, just to, to let them see if things change and they want to get their kid, or maybe they have their kid at home and they find out it's not going well and, and I hate for them to struggle for an entire semester, but just as I think about it now, but, but I think we can be flexible with whatever. I'm willing to go with, with whatever timeline works best.
Others?
This is Amy. I would agree with Mike said, I think we can be very flexible. I know I mentioned this the last, or being the, more board meeting, that I do feel we need to have a cutoff to be fair to our teachers, especially for those coming back in. I don't think it's as big of an issue for kids and families who choose to be face-to-face and then choose to pull out for online. But I do think it's a big decision to make at the beginning of August if we say hard and fast not to come back until January. So I think, I think we could have some wiggle room for that and I think maybe us as administrators can discuss that a little bit more tomorrow afternoon, just to make sure we're feeling confident in serving our families the way they need to be.
I'd be good with that.
I'd be good with that too.
My, my sense would be, it'd be nice to have it shorter, but you're the ones that have to deal with this.
I think as the team, as the team can get together and decide that, I think we need to communicate that clearly to our patrons.
And it needs to be within this survey too.
And include it in the survey, please.
Yeah, whatever you guys decide, whatever you're comfortable with. I say just put it in the survey, make sure they know what they're committed to and as long as you guys are all on board, just go and do it.
So question back to the administrators again, because we had the opportunity to meet with several.
And they are going to go through, the administrators are each going to go through theirs, just so you know too.
Yes, so I've got a question for the survey. This does not represent a commitment, as Carrie said. Then the next question is, how strongly do you feel? Will this give you enough information to begin the planning? Because as Carrie said and Lindsay said, everybody said, you know, you're going to have to have an idea of how many are going virtual versus in-person. Well, even though it's not a commitment, do you feel comfortable that you can plan with this?
I, I think so for me. Any information is, is better than guessing and so it can give us a rough idea. I think we can, we can make that work, understanding that there's going to be, you know, some variation to it. I think, I think I can make it work.
Yeah, I would agree with Mike, I mean, we can make it work. I would probably try to err on the side of the high end just because we can make less work as we have, that's our normal. So yeah, I think that just preliminary information will help us tremendously to know moving forward.
Amy or Stacy or Cindy?
Amy for us at the high school, that, that information will give us something to get, go on and plan.
And then Katie, is she on? She's the one we have her phone?
She must be good. So I have one, and I think it is an important one for the survey is, I like that you, you have a definitions, but I, in my, my opinion, if I was a parent, I would say you're not really telling me a lot about what this onsite option looks like. And that, that was the purpose for this, and I don't know if this is a good time, but as we've been thinking about it and talking about it and then working with Ashley and Lynn, thank you very much again for all of your time, they were the two leaders of the health and safety, we kind of went back and said, well, what really does that look like? Because, you know, if I'm making a decision again, well, I want to know what it looks like. And so I, I compliment that there's a definition in there, but I, my, my, my opinion would be it needs to be a lot more detailed.
Yes, and that's funny, I'm glad you brought that up Tyler, because when, I think I mentioned having the pictures and so we're going to include that with a form of, whether it's this exact one, that will be a part of that so that they have that to reference to, because you're right. And people want the, want, want to know the most that they can possibly know about what this will look like and what that means.
And it's an opportunity, I mean, we're expecting everybody to respond, right? So it's an opportunity right there to train that it's not just social or physical distancing, face coverings, but it's screening.
Yeah.
It's hygiene, we're going to be doing engineering controls, we're going to be working with classrooms, right?
No, I agree and I think that it's, you're right. And so those, I mean, we can put them all in that, in this document as well. I, what I worry about, and this is just me, that if we have all that up here, I want to make sure that people read it.
You could link to it possibly.
Yeah, and that's, that's another thing. So yes.
And with the, the linked safety protocols, you know, so specifically now they can be like, I'm answering this question with these protocols to the best and pictures, you know.
And I know it's, it's probably detailed, but I think it's detail they want to know.
Oh, I would agree.
And so I would say either it's all in there or the onsite just says, go to this link, but not shorten it just a few, because then you might read that and think that's it, right?
No, I'd run with that.
That'd be my opinion.
Okay.
Ashley, Lynn, I mean, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree. I am putting in that page with all of those definitions and things and then the places that say, you know, we'll provide the link and information like that. Getting those things shorted up and putting up with the pictures, I think would help give parents a good idea of what things would look like to make that decision.
And just so like, and just so this group knows, I was hoping that we could go over that in detail on 6.01. That's where the board is going to talk about the approval. Where we'll let the administrators and the teams talk about what their plans are and then we'll come back with, I think, a very clear definition of that.
Good.
Is that right? Okay. Just so, I mean, I know we're talking about this document and that and just to let people know that we'll be going over that in detail.
But that's, yeah, I just, that's where I think it fits, is the survey.
I, I am totally fine with that. We will, I, we will make those adjustments to this. I will send you the new one, Dale, and then you can link it into the Dropbox.
So yes, I think that we were going to go to the administrators, I mean, each of them will have a chance to maybe give a, a description of maybe what they're at, or I don't want to speak for you guys.
System update or.
Maybe for the buildings, yeah, just to give us some context.
Can I just, can I ask one question or just?
I'm sorry, Carrie.
Are we, I just want to make sure that, that you all, or do you want, are you comfortable however we, the, the date for, however long we, whether we go the 12th or the 17th on that form, I would really like to get some input from them on that, so.
Maybe that same meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we would do, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to give you guys that heads up.
I think that that's most important, that your team is comfortable with those days and that you can react.
Okay, perfect, that's all.
Would you agree with that?
Yeah, my opinion, I say do it the 12th because you always want to leave a little wiggle room. We all know 12 doesn't mean.
It means a trailer.
So I say, my opinion, do the 12th, hard line, and then we got Lisa.
Then you got those.
Every five days of like, we have heard from these people, we want to make sure we hear from them. So that's, that's my opinion on that.
Perfect. John, I wanted to give you an opportunity, I thought you might have had a question that you didn't get in. Did you get your questions?
No, I was just thinking, it'll kind of depend. So if, if we have up to half, worst case scenario, and I'm sure there's mitigating things that, that we can make teachers feel safe, that we wouldn't have half of our teachers not comfortable teaching in school, once they understand safety protocols that we're going to put in place to make it a safer environment. But at any rate, it, it could be a substantial number of, of teachers that aren't comfortable being onsite. And so then I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm going through my head of what does that look like if we're not able to get enough teachers onsite and what are some alternatives when, if we were to have a shortage of substitutes and a shortage of teachers? And so really, just when you brought that up of, hey, there's a limited number of physics teachers, so, you know, what does that collaboration look like among the superintendents to say, all right, we're going to pick one from the school to do physics, we're going to pick one that's going to do X, we're going to pick one that's going to do Y online with the idea of we're all in this together and, you know, can you find that they're using the same curriculum? Maybe, maybe not, it could be a dumb idea. But, but at any rate, just, just throw out the idea of, I'm fearful of if, if we do struggle with, with getting educators, the, the one thing that online brings about is you can really spread it over a lot of students and still have maybe our teachers do the backroom work of, you know, what it involves to keep those students untasked and all that goes with that. But yet the instruction could be done on a, on a higher level in the event we get to that. Hopefully, that's not necessary, but it just came to my mind of, of, you know, if, if we are struggling with those, those, you know, more specialized areas and we're going to struggle with finding that expertise in short amount of time.
Yeah, that would be an excellent, and I know that I've had the same thing in the past, that this isn't something for every, especially on some of, on the smaller side of things, this isn't for us to solve independently on our own, let's collaborate. We do that already with some teachers. I hope that we're making, but I, I hope that we're not just giving it lip service, but that we're really just diving in and asking those questions and finding out from other districts to say, are we doing this? What's our opportunities? Are you in the same boat, right? Similar surveys or conversations with the other districts, I think is important.
I think we're on schedule for Story County Superintend's meeting tomorrow, so that may be out soon.
I think so.
No, I don't think that, I mean, Everett, what Everett brought up is very true. I mean, what's, what's easier at the elementary and the intermediate?
I mean, what's, what's easier at the elementary and the intermediate, maybe the middle school, that's, that's a sticky one as well, is we can't just pulse everybody out. And the numbers are going to, whatever our numbers are, that's going to drive how we really need to look at it. But we, that work with superintendents needs to happen, because that could be an option. We don't know.
Okay, we better, I, I know, this is a really important topic, and I by no means want to shorten it and leave things unsaid, but I do want to make sure that we're also mindful of, you know, of the meetings. So maybe we should proceed on to the admin reports. Are you all right with that? Any other questions? Okay. Let's, and I, I know, I think Vic is gone, because we also have a game going on.
Yep, so we have a couple of administrators that are happy at that.
Is there an order that you guys want to go in, or?
Whatever you'd like to do.
I know Cindy's here to represent.
Cindy has her hand up. She must be ready to go.
All right.
Yep, I'm talking for Vic, because he's over watching his son pitch right now. So at the high school level, some things we've gotten in place or are working on right now. We've gotten our hand dryers disconnected and replaced with paper towel dispensers. Our drinking fountains have been covered. Our water bottle fillers remain available. Our nurse's office right now is under construction, along with Jason Holton's office right there. It'll be an entryway that is designed to allow students to enter directly off of the commons. So there's a separate area in case we need it for anybody with COVID-19 symptoms, and also to avoid having students walk through the main office. Also, we have plexiglass ordered for our main office and our classrooms. Our main conversations the last couple of weeks have been around ways to accommodate social distancing, and especially in classrooms. Our comments area was lunch in our hallways, and then with our lab classes, and then of course with our staff members for staff meetings, and then their common workplaces. Those are some of the things we've been focusing on lately, I'm sure, like many other buildings. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Cindy, you mentioned that plexiglass, and you, did you say for classrooms? So how extensive is the planning? Is that for many classrooms, or?
We actually have looked at increasing the amount of plexiglass from what we originally had, had ordered. I think it was two weeks ago, we put it in order. But then this, this past week, we talked about wearing more plexiglass, simply because it gives us more flexibility in classrooms with seating. We definitely are looking at classrooms of 27, 28 kids, depending on the classes. And we need to be able to look at how to get all of those kids in our classes. Plexiglass can help us with that.
Cindy, you talked a little about lunch, too. I know Vic mentioned at one time possibly having open campus. Again, I don't need a commitment, but just wear your heads around that.
Open campus would give us a leverage point. It would give us the possibility of having students leave the building, who can leave the building and go home for lunch, and allowing us to still be able to keep social distancing with our comments area. We also, on the other hand, have areas such as our band room and our vocal rooms set up for lunch there. We had tables ordered to be able to have more tables in other areas. So in, in reality, though, even with open campus, we still plan to be able to serve 200-plus students in the building at one time, if need be, by using our commons, the vocal room, and the band room. The open campus would be a huge help, just that, that possibility that we would only be used during this time.
Good, thank you.
And anything else that you wanted to share? But again, not a commitment, because I know that, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but mentioning about like scheduling, I, you're, Kerry mentioned about possibly four day or four and a half day, or is that okay to mention that? I don't, again, it's not a commitment.
I would love to, I would love to.
I appreciate the opportunity. I think anything we can do to help our teachers do the best, do what they do. I really liked John Davis's comment he made. He said, "An environment where our student, where our staff can do the job they need to do." And the environment, of course, the health and safety, which is what we're working on, and what I spoke to. But the other part of that is them having that time to be high-quality teachers for our students who are remote learners. We, we have students in the classrooms, but to have students learn online is a whole different world for both those children and our teachers. And we absolutely want to do the best we can not to leave those kids behind. And that, that means there's a need for more time for our teachers to be able to connect with them. How otherwise can they connect with them if they're teaching classroom full, classrooms full of students every day, all day? And, and when, when do they get ready? And when do they, they work on assessing those kids, meeting with those kids virtually to find out what they need? So I think considering that and how our teachers can do their best jobs is very, very important right now.
And, I mean, I'm just thinking, too, like, this is still early, and I understand you're still going through some details. But as an online, if I was a parent choosing online, I think it would be interesting to be able to talk sometimes, too, because like, I don't think our intention is that we would only teach online on Wednesdays, right? Or, or is it? And, and that's something that I think is a message that I think will want to be clear. You know, when we ask our parents, online, does on, what does online mean?
No, I.
And I only, you know, I, I've heard other people say it, too, that way, that that's our chance to get in touch with on, with our remote students, but that doesn't seem like enough, and I.
Oh, I would agree. And the other, on, on the flip side of that, if, if we have a day, if, I mean, which I think not, if, I personally believe we should have a day. That also helps our students that are onsite. What does remote learning look like if we have to do that? I think you're, you're preparing them for that as well. I think there's a, there's a really a double duty there, but.
Yeah, but I, I think that will be interesting as that, as that comes out. When we're asking, when we're asking parents to make a decision of, we're being very careful to describe this, the mitigation in place. And I know we want them to be here at, at the school. But I think as much as possible, maybe being able to provide some of that insight of what online would look like, or what we hope it would look like, would be helpful, to the extent that we can at this time. So I appreciate that, Cindy. I didn't mean to, sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot about that. I know you didn't offer it, but.
No, it's not at all, that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions? I think, thank you, Cindy, for going through that. Oh, Vic, Mike has a hand up. I love how they're raising their hands.
We'll just go right down in, in order, I guess. So I'll, I'll go next. I may want to give more detail if you want, I'll kind of give you the highlights. Looking at lunch, I think through a combination of spacing kids out and you, having some kids eat in teachers' classrooms. And then we're fortunate, we have that outdoor seating patio and quite a bit of green space. And so Mr. Beecher allowed me to order some additional folding white tables, some folding chairs that we can put out when weather permits, put outside. When weather doesn't permit, we can put around the perimeter of the lunchroom to add some more space to lunch. So that's something that, that we'll be looking at. My goal is to, through spacing and barriers, to hopefully not have kids wearing masks a lot in class, unless the board wants me to do that. And so my barrier order was pretty big. I think Mr. Beecher could tell you, I ordered quite a few. And if we don't get them, then we'll look at, at kids wearing masks. But through space and barriers, I was hoping at least to give them a reprieve throughout the day periodically. They will wear masks in the hallway. They will not use lockers. They will carry backpacks until at least the weather gets cold enough that they have winter coats and that kind of stuff. Then we may have to reconsider, depending on what the situation is when we get to late October, November. What works in my advantage is middle school kids who often wear winter coats. A lot of you had middle school kids yourselves at one point, so you'll know that they don't wear winter coats. And so it'll be a while before that's probably an issue. We're going to, basically, we, we've got to close our collaboration spaces. We had a bond, we added these great collaboration spaces, but essentially we're going to close those off. And so we roped that area off. I don't have anywhere to remove the furniture, too, but, but we roped that off. We did, Mr. Beecher allowed me to retrofit two, two of my water fountains have bottle fillers, two do not. And so we've got to order in to retrofit the two that don't for bottle fillers that operate independent of the actual, you know, drinking fountain parts. We'll be able to mark off the drinking fountain, but they can get water through the bottle fillers. We relocated where the school counselor was, and her office now will be the holding room for any suspected COVID cases at school. And so we are working on that. We moved her furniture out, working on, on making arrangements there. I'm just trying to look through my list here. Do you guys have questions about anything? I can, I can go into more detail on anything that, that you're curious about.
Anybody have questions?
No.
Just any further thought on cohorts or clusters? And I know we've visited a little bit, but can you just share with the board?
Sure. So the, what Tyler's referring to is scheduling kids into a cohort, so they're with the same kids all day long versus mixing them up every period, similar to what a high school would do. So the middle school is generally operated where our kids are scheduled individually or mixed up throughout the day. At the eighth grade level, I, it would be very difficult to do cohorts because of the accelerated classes. I would be putting all those kids into one section, essentially. It is possible at the sixth and seventh grade level. I sat down and looked at some contact tracing and what would be involved with that, how many kids, if they were mixed up, versus if they were in a cohort. Set up some classrooms, took a tape measure at the six feet to look and see. And it really doesn't come out too many more kids who would be within that six feet if they're mixed up versus if they're just a, a whole section. So, you know, I talked to middle school principal Boom, Roland Story, North Polk, Monret Frarner. They're not planning on doing cohort, cohorts either. So at this time, I'm not planning on doing cohorts at sixth and seventh grade. Of course, I, we certainly can do that. You know, we're going to have kids out at recess. We're going to have kids at, at lunch. We're really going to be mixed up, you know, and, and so I'm not currently planning on doing cohorts. Is there questions on that, or?
No, I think that's good just to explain, because I know we've, we've heard, and, and obviously I think that is the situation for an intermediate and elementary. So just, I think it's good to explain where you're at for middle school.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Intermediate, very similar things to what Vic and Mike have talked about as far as the water fountains, the water filling stations, lunch. I'm fortunate that we can space out. We have at the intermediate several options that we can do for lunch. And so once a decision is made with you guys this evening, moving forward, it'll be, I'm looking forward to working with my teachers to come up with what they feel, you know, will work best for them and our students to keep safe. We've got both gyms that we can use, we can use classrooms, and quite a bit of space in our lunchroom that we can space out. So we'll work through those details in, in the way that our staff feels comfortable to support. Classrooms, they have about 50/50 classrooms that have two-person tables versus the individual desks. Both can be set up in a way that we can keep social distancing within that three feet. And again, like Mike said, my plexigla, plexiglass barrier order increased quite a bit. Mr. Beecher?
Yes, it did.
So just hoping again to provide those barriers so that during, while our kids are in the classroom, that they don't have to wear masks. But again, in the hallways, entering school, exiting the school, and those things, that they will have their masks on. There will be a lot of logistics, just like all of us that will have to work through with our staff, and making sure that we're all on the same page in how we navigate through traveling the building. And then also, we do switch a few classes at the intermediate, but we do that in cohorts already, and so that will stay the same as what it has in the past. Any questions specific to the intermediate?
Can you go ahead and mention real quick about the nurse's office? I know you said you're switching that down the hall.
Yeah, thanks, you drew. I have a couple of options for our nurse's office. Currently, it is located in the main office. So if someone would come in that's test positive or has been exposed, they would then expose the office staff. So we will look at relocating our nurse's office, which neither of these options will take a lot of work. And so we'll, I just need to get together with our nurse staff and some teacher representatives and decide what we feel would be the best. But one option is kind of in the middle of the building. We have some small rooms that have restroom access. And then the other option would be, there is a locker room that has a hallway access, kind of across from the art room, not too bad, not too far from where you guys are right now, that is hallway access. And so we could divide and kind of re-retrofit that area to become our nurse's office.
Perfect, thank you.
Amy, I, more in your building than I think of middle school or high school. I think about recess, just like elementary school. And so thoughts about that? I know there's a lot of equipment out there, and just how, how you can maybe manage that?
Yeah, we'll be creative. Stacy and I have talked a little bit about this in our elementary principal group within, which is like the area schools. We've shared some emails back and forth. But, you know, keeping our kids within their cohorts and dividing the space that we have into sections where they can still be outside, but staying within their own cohort, maybe rotating, you know, what sections they get to be at, so that they aren't, you know, always at the same one and get to be at different things. I'm, again, fortunate, I've got the field, I've got the track. We're playing around areas we need to, we can section out some of the west side. So we'll, we'll work through that, those logistics. And, you know, like you guys said last week at our work session about even being outside, classes taking some little breaks and walking around the building, or those kind of things, will be important to schedule in once we get back and figure out our daily schedule.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Amy. Stacy, I think she's already qualified.
Um, well, I think I'll just kind of start and talk a little bit about our common areas. So recess, just to kind of piggyback up what Amy said. Ashley, first of all, I want to say a big thank you to Ashley, someone my instructional coach, who has like been putting in tons of extra time to help me work out all these logistics of what will happen in the building. She and I have gone through, and we have the pictures of the specific areas, so we know what our five zones are. So we'll, each class will have a zone that they'll rotate through on different days. So we're kind of keep them in that cohort for recess. And we also have ordered color-coded recess equipment. So if you're Mrs. B's class, you know that yours is the purple set, and that's your set that you use to kind of avoid having to clean all the recess equipment all the time. And then lunchroom, we went through and we measured, and we are fortunate that we have actually two spaces. We have lunch tables built into our gym. And so our plan is to put three classes in the gymnasium and two classes in our current lunchroom comments area. We can fit, we can fit all of the kids pretty comfortably with greater than three feet, because obviously you can't wear a mask or a face shield while you're eating. So we wanted to try and get that area as, as far apart as possible. So that's nice. We shouldn't have to have anybody eat in their classrooms, which was a goal we were trying to meet. We will have also for restrooms, was kind of a process we were trying to figure out. We have a lot of restrooms in the elementary. We just don't have much capacity in any one restroom. So we have a system worked out so that we can, that'll have the, kids will have a little clip that they'll put, and if there's space on the clip, you can go in. If not, you'll have a waiting spot. If those are full, you just got to wait and come back a little bit later. So obviously, we don't want to try and work really hard in the classrooms to keep kids spaced apart and then put them in areas where they're all going to be crammed together. So we also, just today with the tour, we talked a little bit about nurse's office. Dan Wright, our maintenance director, is going to get in touch with a couple contractors about the possibility of putting a doorway between a, a smaller office that's by our, our nurse's office currently. So we, he's kind of come and evaluated that quickly and seen what the possibility of that should be to allow for that holding area for students who might be, have symptoms that we need to keep separate. So that's kind of the big pieces in our comment area. We, other things that we've done, we've ordered floor tape to make sure that kids kind of know what lane that they're going in and such. In terms of routines, we've worked through dismissal process. One thing we need to, I need to talk a little bit with Bruce, because we are the meeting spot for all the buses. So we're just going to work through that a little bit. But right now, our plan is that our, each teacher will take all of their kids to their individual buses at the end of the day. That's a little different. We've been used to doing kind of an apple cart upset, and each teacher taking a certain bus of kids. And so that'll be a little bit different for us. We are working as, as hard as possible as keeping kids in their cohort. And for us, that's nice. And for us, that's nice. It's natural to put in their classes. But we're also going to do some things. For example, we have a specials, and in the past, our teachers, our kids may go to specials, may do two specials in a day. Instead, we'll do one special a day. For some of them, it'll be a little bit longer than they're typically used to, and they'll have a little transition time in between. So we've built that schedule already. We've also put together, each of our grade levels, we have a model room, I guess for lack of a better word, where we have already put the seating kind of out and spacing it needs to be in so that, and then we've kind of created, I guess, a PowerPoint that then the teachers will be able to see like, okay, these are the things, this is what your desk needs to look like, this is the orientation they need to have, the spacing, and really the rest is kind of up to you, is really how we've done it. We've had to order some different furniture for our kindergarten classrooms because their tables wouldn't allow us to be even three feet apart. So one of the goals that we have at the elementary, just knowing how much phonics instruction we do here and some of the other things that we were concerned about, we wanted to be able to see the face as much as possible. So at the elementary, Lynn Reed has been really great at sourcing a lot of our health and safety equipment and needs, and she has found some face shields. So we are, have ordered, or will be ordering face shields for all of the elementary students. And that really is going to be our go-to face covering for the elementary. They will all have a mask because there will be certain times when masks are required as well, just especially during transportation, coming into the building and leaving, when we don't have the opportunity to keep them as separate if they will be in the classroom. So, and then with the face shields, what our goal is that for the most part, they're on. We obviously understand when they're in their, we've called like their desk and their room kind of their home base. If they're in their home base, there's obviously a little bit of flexibility, like if you've got a blow in your nose or your face gets, you know, your head gets itchy and you just need to take it off for a second and, so those kind of things. So, but we're basically encouraging them to keep them on and when they're in the rooms. We did have two classrooms that will have to do plexiglass barriers between students because we can't get them three feet apart with the current furniture. So, you know, with my goal to minimize as much plexiglass as possible. But we've also, as Cindy said, that order, Lynn placed that order for us. We are also working with some different, luckily, several of my teachers have connections because we want to work on plexiglass barriers for our teacher tables so that we can continue to maybe work with a few kids at a time if needed. I think that's the goal, unless there's questions.
You, maybe you did if I, sorry if I missed it, but you wanted to comment on recess because we talked about outside and just your strategy there.
Yeah, so everybody will go out to recess. Our goal is that they, you know, hopefully, we can do that without face covering the face shields and just, you know, be able to breathe for a little bit. But we will still keep kids in the cohorts. So we have five locations throughout that we are, we're kind of working out how the best way is to mark that off, whether it's with, you know, spray paint or a little bit of snow fencing or whatever the case may be, just because I think we can take the best picture, the teachers can know it, but we've got to communicate that to kids. And then we've had the color-coded equipment, so they'll kind of have that area. And then they'll rotate through that, those things. So it won't be like if your set doesn't, your area doesn't have swings today, well, two of the five days, there's swings in an area, so.
Just a comment too. Stacy told me today that the plan is for those face shields, they would leave those at school.
Yes.
And they'd go to school, they have them in their desk, whatever, they'd wear them throughout the day. At the end of the day, they'd leave them at their desk, and then they'd wear their masks, mask on and head home, so.
Yep. Just as I'm thinking about where the lockers came up, and I'm sorry, I didn't really talk about lockers. Our plan is that students will use lockers. However, as they enter the building, they'll go straight to their, whether it's their desk or their spot in the room. And then the teachers will kind of five at a time during that morning routine time send kids out. That way, we'll limit the number of people in our halls. Our locker areas are pretty tight, and so we want to make sure that we are, you know, not overcrowding them during that time.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I have another, like, thing I thought about. I did talk to Dan Wright a little bit, just, I know one of the, one of the suggestions is to, you know, keep the circulation and ventilation. So they are changing out filters. Usually, we change filters, I believe it's every six, I don't know, about six weeks or six months. He said every six, and we'll be changing them every three. So those filters will get changed 52% more. And then they will adjust the system, our EIB system, to allow more fresh air. There's some unintended consequences to that, with the more fresh air you let in in August, the more humidity you have in your building. But obviously, it's going to cycle the fresh air through faster at an increased rate. So that's a positive.
Cool. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just to add on, you heard each of the principals talk about as they get their rooms ready for the social distancing, we are going to have extra furniture for this time period. So we're checking out to see if there's, there's local places where you can go ahead and put those in storage or you can do a pod, because they are going to have places where they need to go with that furniture and can't just go out in the hall.
Thank you.
Lindsay, while we're on it, several brought up plexiglass and additional orders. There was a question at the work session, how available? Do you have any idea of the availability of the plexiglass?
I've checked with Dan. We met on, I think it was Thursday with our administrative team. The gentleman that, that we're, well, we're getting it through a couple of different sources. We're getting it through one of the sources, and that's where we got about 85 of these plexiglass barriers when we first started out. And he's checking to see what our availability is. I know that just even locally, Menards has it on right now. We could go out and get it. Stacy kind of alluded to the fact of maybe we can get some of the local people that we have to help us with maybe some of the detailed work on that. I even know that in Story City, there's another place that we have a staff member has a spouse that we can, you know, look at. So we are trying to tap into anything and everything that we have.
Yeah, and I hope if we have local places that have it, I hope we just go get it.
Right.
Right? Lots of places are going to need it and...
When they said that they increased their order, they weren't getting, and that's fine. They're doing it because they want it to be safe. There's no other reason than that.
Makes sense.
Good job, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much for that detail. You can definitely see the need and the differences, why not every building can be exactly the same. Thank you very much. Okay, we are really behind, but this is an important topic. And also with celebrations, I know right now we have a game going on, right?
Yep.
Anything to celebrate yet in the game?
Yeah.
Just starting to celebrate.
I'm glad to hear that that season is going well, and I know that the softball team wrapped up. But very cool to see that they were able to complete seasons.
0-0 again at first inning.
Okay, anything else? Or reports? I don't know if anybody has.
What reports?
I know that we attended a seminar, the Andrew, Tyler and I, I'm sorry, I lost my words, COVID from IASB that I think we all thought was very helpful. And I, those are recorded, and I think we have those available. So I think if people are interested in listening to them, it was nice, and a lot of folks from the area participated, so I would just restate that, so people are aware we have that information. Why don't we move on to old business before we have another? Sam, I hope that you're able to multitask here. I'm sorry we kept you.
Yeah, I'm good. Don't worry about me.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, old business 501, second reading of amended board policies. So these are policies, and there is a, do we have the summary document here with that?
Oh, it would be in our minutes.
In our minutes, on the last one. So you're able to see that. So this is where we're going through our policies, and we freshen them up every five years. This would be the second reading of these, and they are pertaining to policy and how we create them. I was just looking to see if we had. For the most part, we were talking about adding notes for clarification as well as making sure that our cross-references were updated and legal references. I don't believe there are any of these that we recommended any change, any substantial change. So this would be the second reading of those. Anybody have a chance, as you look through your packet, that you had any questions that you wanted to bring up this time around? I know there were none the first time.
I just know from that IASB webinar, there was specific comments relative to leave and...
We have, we do have a section of those, yes. Those are, so we've actually, because there's so many policies during this meeting.
6.06.
That is actually a separate section. So we, these are, this is grouped as a second reading. There's another administrative, was the first reading, and then we've got the COVID policies. You're absolutely right, Tara. Any questions or anything we entertain, a motion on this one?
I'm going to approve, and I also await the third reading.
Second.
Second? Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those, those policies are passed and they can be updated then. Okay, new business. We have 601 on the agenda, to consider and approve the resolution for reopening plan for the start of the 2021 school year. We have listened, we have a packet here, we have discussed on our work session as well as on in July, some options for how we could open. There is, I believe this proposal is for the parent choice option, right? July 20th is early in COVID days, right, to make decisions. But we think it's important that we make a decision that at this point in this given the information we have at hand, wanting to discuss and approve possibly the resolution as well as perhaps make clarifying statements on mitigation. So I think we would want to have some discussion about this. I know there was, there were topics that we talked about. Tyler, you have a document that perhaps you wanted to share.
Yeah, and I think this is in, you know, so is there an actual reopening document, a plan that we can vote on?
I don't believe there is an actual...
Okay, so then I would just describe in general before we make a motion that we are talking about parent's choice. What that would mean is I think the board and the administration all agree that we want to bring back as many, yes, Carrie?
Your, our return to learn plan, the narrative, we will rename that the reopening plan, and that's really what you're voting on.
So this document?
Yes.
This document?
That we're adding that to.
Well, it just does not have a record, it doesn't say...
No, I only copied the first two pages. It's the same document that we had before, but those are the major changes now with adding that, changing the hybrid to the parent choice.
Okay, and in this document, you indicate onsite learning, remote learning and hybrid. And so there isn't anything that says in this document specifically that we are, you were recommending the parent choice, but I think that's what we are.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, Carrie, because the IASB webinar again, and maybe that's just a different set of information, they were really clear. The return to learn was that it was a plan, it was preparation, and then they used the term reopening plan, right? And so if all it is, is we're saying, well, this is reopening plan, great. But on that, we, what we need to, I think, we're voting on tonight is what are we reopening on, what are we planning for on August 27?
Okay.
So we can rename this and remove context that is not in the plan for August 27?
This is, I will say, this is mine, I just, I didn't copy the whole thing again. I just was copying what the changes were.
And I think that's fine.
And that's, I just, that's the only thing I did. So I am sorry if I confused that issue on that.
No, not at all. I think what we're wanting to do is be really clear, and we'll rename this reopening plan.
Yes, that's...
And then let's just, let's just include those pieces of what we're trying to reopen with. Do you know what I mean? I think that removes onsite learning. I think that removes, you know, the remote learning, unless we're just leaving those for...
Well, those are your parent choices, though. I think you just checked...
The parent choices would be the...
Yeah, that's what that is.
So if we're, if we're talking about parent choice, the goal again is that we get as many students as want to come back in person here in a safe manner for both our students and our teachers. That's where this mitigation comes into play. The other discussion point for the context we've talked about, I think, is that for what we know today, this would be, and this, we need to have some discussion, this would be the mitigation strategies that we're going to use to start, but we should give ourselves latitude to say, we will reevaluate where we're at at the end of September or at some timeframe, so as to say, we've got to pick a place where we're going to start. So I just want to bring that up in the context of, you know, we had some conversation about, well, how long are these choices, right? Well, to Carrie, and, you know, again, with, with the survey, I think that's great, it's, well, this is more detail, but this would be describing whatever we call this phase one, August 27 until, and I think we need to talk about that. And the administration and Ashley and Lynn, we want you to certainly engage in this as well, so...
And you'd have to be, that period has to be pretty short, just because we're going to learn an awful lot in the first two weeks of school. Matter of fact, we might learn some stuff before school starts, but, but this, I think to communicate to the people of this is the plan that we anticipate the start of the school day, you know, it's not set in concrete, but it's, it's definitely what we're, we're expecting.
So do you want to go through these, maybe?
I think we should, and I think, I think, I think I'd really like the administrators and Lynn and Ashley from the health and safety to, to engage as well. I'm just looking here, so August 27 is a Thursday, and then we will have a meeting again on the 14th. So it'll be two and a half weeks in that we would be meeting again, as an example.
And I think that makes some sense, right? And then that we would be getting feedback from what's working and what's not working at that meeting.
So these mitigation strategies, not to go the labor at all, but we put screening at the top because that's absolutely key to all of this, and that is that there is screening, that if, if no one comes to school sick, we don't have a COVID issue, right? So the screening for students, faculty and staff is critical. I think where the team has come out is parents will have to screen their children at home, right? But that's why it's so important to communicate that. What we heard on our tours or today specifically elementary is the staff's actually doing their temperatures at school. So we put that in there. I mean, I think this is for the administrative team to talk through as well, what makes most sense, but screening is important and it's the first one on the list. Hygiene, I think that's self-explanatory, keep hands clean, away from face, eyes, nose, mouth. My wife reminds me of that every day. Surface cleaning throughout the buildings according to CDC guidelines. Ashley brought that up today. And hand sanitizers, which I think many of you have talked about, the additional hand sanitizers. Physical distancing, so this one is where we need to be very clear. Classrooms will be arranged to maximize space between students. Physical distancing will be observed and practiced to the full extent possible. A minimum of three feet between seated children will be maintained. And this is where pictures and links to the classroom, I think, would be valuable for the parents to see. We'll be utilizing non-traditional spaces for classrooms and allow for additional short periods of time outdoors in cohorts. Before I go on, I want to kind of stop there. We had quite a discussion and had had quite a discussion, but anybody from the admin team or Ashley or Lynn, you want to provide some comments?
Ashley?
Do we have a list in there what our threshold would be, the three feet? And I know that we have that, it's kind of listed in where it says physical distancing, I got to find it, sorry, a minimum of three feet between seated children will be maintained. Do we want to say, you know, our goal is that physical distancing of three feet, and if that can't be maintained, then barriers? I know that we have that next piece there with the engineering control, so I'm kind of jumping ahead, so I don't know if it goes there or not, but just laying that out to people that when three feet can't be maintained, that's when we might consider plexiglass barrier or the mask or face shield, whatever, face covering.
So potentially, minimum of three feet between seated children will be maintained or barriers will be put in place. I mean, if we're, if we think we can do that, I mean, that's what we're asking.
I don't, a minimum of three feet, so three feet is here to here, very close, right? And three feet, I, it's my understanding that the American Academy of Meteoritics states three feet with masks. So I'm a little concerned, maybe somebody can clarify for me, but...
Well, we haven't got the face coverage.
No, but, but we're already saying three feet between seated children. And then, okay, my question's I'm meaning to, are we stacking or are we just going with fours?
So, right, so right now we're just talking about physical distancing.
Three feet, and if you're at least three feet, we are not requiring, requiring barriers, and yet I hear it all throughout this, how many barriers we are buying.
Because we've got tables like this.
Three feet, this is a three-foot table.
Uh, this is probably a four-foot table.
And one on this side and one on that side, and we're putting barriers, so I think, listen, I'm happy for it, but I think we're doing three feet, and I thought we were doing, in most cases, we're doing barriers.
Well, I'd like to hear from.
Let's hear from them.
The admin team.
Yep.
Mike?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead, sorry.
So the way that, so my understanding was the three foot was that they're all facing the same direction, the way I have to set up my tables, I can't have them facing the same direction, they're kind of perpendicular to each other, so I'm going to have three feet and a barrier, I'm hoping, because I will have three feet, but, but they won't be facing the same direction, just in the organization of the room.
Okay, got it, so that's why we're doing barriers there, I, I'm happy that we're doing barriers, I don't need to, I just want to.
So the, so the other thing to think about, because we've added more detail than the original draft, but, I mean, it's good input, but the more detail we put in here, the more we're putting very strict, and there probably is less flexibility by building as well, right? So that's what it's got for physical distancing, engineering controls talks about physical barriers, district will be putting physical barriers in offices and where possible, in classrooms. Ventilation controls, and we need to add a little bit more on that, if you can tomorrow, Carrie, yep?
Can I, can I go back up just very quickly to the staff temperatures will be taken at school, because that, that's different than what we had, and that's totally fine, but I want to make sure we're talking every staff member, like, I mean, we're talking, no, I'm just, I think we have to be clear, because we have bus drivers that come in here, and originally we had said that, that we, our expectation was that they would take their temperatures at home, so I, I want to make sure that we're clear on this, on, on who we're talking about, and so we have those, and we have, we did order extra thermometers, but I just want to make sure we have the thermometers in all the places that we need them.
So I think we need to clarify.
And the main thing would be, I think, from an overall strategy, the last thing we want is, is a bunch, a bunch of teachers gathering, and so if we're going to have it, have temperature checks in a lot of places so that we don't have a concentration of, of teachers in, in one spot.
Well, and we're talking cooks, and we're talking janitors, and we're.
And I think we're assuming that you would take care of that by splitting, spreading it out.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that that's what that means, because then we know we have to make sure that that's in place, that's all I'm asking.
That's how I would do it.
Okay, that's fine, just I want to make sure.
Originally, originally I think it was that it would, they would, just like kids, be at home, but.
Yes.
But Ashley and, and Stacy showed us, well, pretty simple, this is what we've been doing at the elementary, but given that's summer school, so, what, what, what do the principals think is feasible?
Anybody, anybody have concerns with taking the temperatures at school, or feel otherwise? I think, I don't, I hate to take silence, it's just acceptance.
I think it might be difficult to take all the temperatures at school, if that's something we decide on, and we'll figure it out, but it would be a challenge.
Anybody else, is it, I mean, I have no.
I have no. Cindy?
I, I might have missed it, I, what is, how we, when did we come to the idea of doing that, or what's our reasoning, you know, like Amy said, it'd be difficult, we can do it, I mean, compared to other things we're doing this year, that'll be easy, but what's our reasoning for doing this?
We were shown today, and Ashley and Stacy, that that's what they're doing at the elementary, and so it was simply, so earlier today, this was a draft that was even shorter than this, and it's been expanded, rightfully so, and Ashley and Lynn have helped with that, and we've kind of, so that was an example, the elementary, but this is why we're having the conversation, what fits for the district?
Stacy?
Yeah, I, again, I'm open either way, however, I, I do wonder, I think we want to encourage staff to take their temperature at home before they come.
Yes.
Because really, once you get there, it's sort of a foregone conclusion that you've probably interacted with someone at some point, so I do think that would be my only thing is, whether we, I, I know there's some districts that, there's like a Google form, and they fill out their temperature every day, but they've done it at home, just as a documentation effort, but yeah, I, I think we can do it, obviously, these are spreadsheet from summer school and how we do it, that's on a pretty small scale, that's, you know, four to eight people in the building at a time, as opposed to even just the 50 adults that we would have here.
Mike, you have your hand up, I'm calling a teacher.
I was just going to echo what Stacy said, I think we, and Amy and Cindy, we absolutely can do it, it would be, of, of course, easier if it were done at home, but, you know, it, we can figure out a way to make it work.
Let's strike it, let's make it consistent with the kids, but let's make sure screening is very clear.
If we, if we trust our students to do that, and we do, then I trust, we would also trust our staff to do that same thing, so staff will be taken at home. Okay, so we clarified that, good job.
Ventilation controls, we can get some further, you know, filters are being changed more frequently and more airflow through the rooms. And can you give us some information on that? So let me come down to face coverings, and again, this is a draft, this is where we need to get alignment, because this is what we want to propose, it's going to be in phase one. Face coverings would be required on buses, all students and bus drivers required to wear face coverings while on district transportation. Face coverings required upon entering and exiting the buildings. Required in hallways and transition between classes and going to the restroom, and if there's other examples that you want to put in there, please, please do, if that helps. During laboratories or group work, if working within three feet of another person. When three feet distancing cannot be maintained, or when instructed by the teacher, those are all times when face coverings would be required. In this draft, we're saying face coverings would be encouraged when indoors and in the space with other people, outdoors, if in close contact with another person for 15 minutes. And so to me, that's the whole crux to where we need to get comfortable with, what are we saying is our initial plan.
The only thing I'd add is, is just being a parent of a special needs student, I cannot, Erin will not wear a mask, and she's very unusual, so at least have a carve-out for the principals to approve exceptions, because I hate to, for example, you know, she can't go to church, because she's not going to leave a mask on, well, it's pretty tough. So anyway, just know that, that I, I think it's like way down, she's very unusual in that sense, but there will be people that will not leave them on, and I think that goes with your kindergartners and first graders, and so that idea of, of we need to at least have a kick-out for those special needs kids, or young enough kids, that, hey, we're going to do the best we can, but we can't, we can't guarantee it for, for certain things, and maybe they got to make alternative arrangements for how that works, and I'm okay with that, but, but just having it be required, then it brings up a whole nother set of issues for, for kids that, that can't do it.
And a number of schools are adding that, and where there's.
They're saying, to the national.
Yeah, 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 just, just something that, that spells out that there's a kick-out.
Especially students who be considered on an individual basis, or accommodations appropriate.
Right, and it could be, okay, my lungs don't work that good, I got, you know, some lung condition where I couldn't ask them now, I can't, I can't get enough oxygen to go.
I, can I go back to what Deb was saying, I got a couple patrons that emailed me, and they said, when they looked at the AAP, I think is what it, recommendations, they said it was the three foot plus the mask that was included in there, that's why they said, and that's why it's good that we're talking about this, that we want to make sure that we're very specific on what we're saying there, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, I'll be honest, like, I appreciate that we heard from administrators who felt comfortable in this, you know, various degrees with masks or not, and I also understand that there's a variety of mitigations, strategies that we're, we're putting in place. I also just looked at a survey that said 50% of our teachers might not be, and, and I personally have some, I have some questions about, I don't totally understand this special, I, I think there should be an out in that case, I'll be clear, I don't think just because I don't want to wear a mask is a reason. Um, yeah, no, I'm just saying that to be clear, I'm not saying that because of, and that wasn't what you were talking about, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
But I'm, I'm with you.
I didn't mean to say that, maybe, yeah.
I didn't know if it's, I was just.
There might be those people, I believe, I would go so far as to say that I'm a little fuzzy on the when instructed by the teacher, and here's why I say that, I fully understand, and I do believe, that a teacher should have the, you know, that one teacher might have a, a situation where they think it's important to say, in my, in my classroom you will wear that, and I think that should be honored. I'm, I'm trying to understand and look at this from a parent's perspective, and now I'm trying to make a decision about whether I feel comfortable with the mitigation that we have in place, and if, especially if I'm like a, a, a intermediate, or I'm sorry, middle school or above, I've got a variety of teachers I'm dealing with, right? And if I'm a parent that says, I want, I want to know, is this required or not, then having this kind of, this teacher says yes, this teacher says no, we're going to be a little lax in this room and not in that room, makes it very hard for me to make a decision about whether to send. I prefer to be a little stronger in our mask, and to say that, I like that we say even three foot distancing cannot be maintained, I like that, I think that across the, the board, we need to be a little bit stronger, and, and not just anymore, Jason, oh, I'm sorry, Mike?
Stacy.
Stacy, sorry, it was like Jason has a question.
So, and I've used this analogy a couple times, but in my mind, for us with the face shield specifically, I think what we would be saying, we've kind of used the airplane seatbelt on the airplane, so basically, there's times you have to have it on for sure, you have to have it on, you know, liftoff and landing, but at, at the same time, when the light goes out, it doesn't mean we take them off, it means that there may be a, a time you could take it off briefly, but the expectation would be that, for the most part, it's on. But I think that's, in my mind, it wasn't like whether everybody just takes it off automatically, it was more like, there's just some flexibility, once you're in that safe spot, that three feet spot, that opens that up, but I mean, my intent was when you walk into my classrooms, mostly kids are going to have face shields on most, all the time.
And then we were talking for a little bit, and I actually felt better about it when I thought we were three feet with plexiglass, and so I thought, okay, in those situations, you're seated, you're three feet, and then, and you know, unless we're facing the same direction, we have plexiglass, if that's not, if that's not an and instead of a nor, I feel like, again, I'm pushing a little bit towards a more.
So just, just so that we're clear, what, what you're suggesting is required at all times, when there's not, when there's not a barrier.
And three feet.
Okay, so, so I'm just, I'm not arguing with you, but just so I'm clear, Stacy, and we walked through that this afternoon, you know, there would not be barriers between those children.
On a single, on a single desk.
She also said that they have face, they have face shield.
But, but she also said it's going to be like an airplane, and they're going, right?
Yep.
And so she wants to give the latitude that those kids don't have those masks, those face guards even on at times, so all I'm saying is, whatever we say here.
Yeah.
We better be ready to stand behind, and if somebody comes and tours and says,
Yeah.
Hey, there's 10 kids in this class that don't have it on, and I thought your requirement was.
Yeah, I understand.
That's why, that's why.
My preference would be to say that when there's six feet distance and no other, if there's six feet and no other mitigating, no, no plexiglass to wear, if there's six feet distance, then I think you can be without a mask.
Which, again, that won't be the case in the elementary classes we toured this afternoon.
And I don't think it's practical with elementary.
But we're talking, she just said that they're going to be on most of the time, right?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not arguing, I'm just being, trying to be very clear, what I'm hearing from you is, it should say required.
I do.
And what Stacy just said is, I have scenarios where she's proposing that that's not the case.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think it should say encouraged, face coverings are required when indoors and those other mitigation factors cannot be met. We say encouraged when indoors and in space with other people, right? Why didn't we say encouraged versus required?
Because encouraged means recommended but not required.
Well, I know that's what it means, but why are we?
Real quick, I just, sorry to jump in, I mean, what I don't want is the teachers all day to be arguing over this face mask, I mean, I mean, there's holes to be teaching, okay, so I, I have trust in our admin, I have trust in our staff, we all know what they need to wear, okay, and if we say required, in my mind, it's going to be, the teachers all know 99% of the time, they're going to have these face masks or face coverings on. Many of the classrooms, both with, I know with middle school, intermediate, they've got individual desks that you can't do, we can't have a barrier, so they're three feet away or four feet away, you get 24 room, 24 desks in a classroom, and there's no way to have a physical barrier in place. Will they have their face mask on? Yes, they will. Can they take it off for a little bit? In my mind, yes, I think they should, can be able to do it today, so that's back to the required, because what I don't want is Jimmy taking it off for a second inch's head, and all of a sudden, teacher stops class, saying, oh, per the guidelines of the board, you got to have that on, and then all of a sudden, the whole classroom is just up in the room, and.
Understood, so.
I mean, we can set the guidelines, they, I mean, I think, not, and I want them all to speak, but I think they're all the same order, they're going to have on, I mean, they're going to have whatever on in the classroom, unless, I mean, again, if we've got a, a plastic barrier between them and six feet of distance.
Maybe I miss, and, maybe I can just, I need to be clarified here, or I need to be, you need to help me understand this clearly, what is when instructed by the teacher mean, what was that for?
I think we just scratch that out.
Yeah, let's just scratch it.
Scratch that out.
I just, I mean.
I agree, I, I don't, I mean, I just think it's.
Well, maybe we meant anytime that the, I, I was confused by that, because then I thought that we were saying.
Let's omit, let's omit that.
Okay.
Do we want to omit the last bullet point?
Hey, real quick, Cindy, can you chime in just on the high school, with what your thoughts are, because I think that's really where, to my mind, that's going to be the biggest issue with some of the classrooms, and the size of the classes.
Sure, it, it is going to be difficult for us to, to maintain, and Deb, I appreciate you asking for that clarification, because I think that three feet to six feet is a huge difference, if we're, if we can do, we can make our classrooms work to keep students three feet apart, so then if we do that, do they need face masks or masks?
With just, with just three feet?
And I'll tell you my personal opinion, we should say encouraged but not required so that we've got flexibility in there. I'm not going to fall on a sword, if for this phase one, we want to say required, but then all I'm saying is, we better do it consistently so that it's consistent across the board, anybody coming in that sends their child to our school because they read that in the survey, but it's not happening, then we failed.
I'm in your camp, Tyler, and I, I think if, if, if we have parents that, that are, the expectation is, is there will, there will never be a time when kids are within six feet without a mask on, you know, I, I don't, I don't, that was our opening thing is, is we can't fit everybody in here and do that, because we don't fit in schools to, to, to maintain six feet distancing, so I think at that point in time, then that's got to be the online option, because we have to give our teachers some flexibility to,
Okay.
And our principals some flexibility, that, that, I, I just don't, I just don't think it's practical that we can keep the six feet, and that's most kind of the get-go of our discussion, is, is, is that then we had to go to three feet, or, or we have to go to a hybrid learning model.
So I have a question, that I have a patron that I want to answer their question. I looked at the website just now, and it says, as close as three feet may approach the benefits of a six-foot space, particularly if students are wearing face coverings and are asymptomatic, I would suggest that you add wearing face coverings along with the three feet social distancing to your message, I don't, how shall I answer that?
We're in that conversation right now.
And that's why I asked it.
So what I, when I toured the schools the last few days, what I heard was in the elementary and middle, and intermediate for sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy and Amy, they want flexibility. I also heard that from Mike, but maybe Mike was saying I can try to make it work what I think is coming from the board, right? And the high school is the one that's probably the most challenging, and the older students are the ones that, if there's a risk, there's the risk, so the other way to approach this is, we, we say, here's the general district guidance, and there's some specific building guidance built into it.
It could be that, Andrew, I'm, I'm with you in that I don't think there should be discussions, and I think that's best achieved by just simply making it. Andrew, I'm, I'm with you in that I don't think there should be discussions, and I think that's best achieved by just simply making it black and white.
Yeah.
There doesn't need to be so much. I, you guys, we don't, fifty percent of our teachers, what are we saying? You know, I, we heard them say they were concerned.
So.
I don't know, have they talked to all of them yet?
So, I don't know, Stacy, I mean, we ask those questions when we're giving these tours, getting these tours. So I, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about your conversations with your staff and their level of anxiety, or put it the other way, their excitement to come back, but. Mike?
I haven't had a lot of in-depth conversations, I've had a lot of questions, but up, up to this point, I think they're all waiting for this conversation you guys are having, uh, before they really, uh, start having those talks you're, you're referring to, Tyler, so, uh, lots of questions, but, but I haven't had, um, lots of, lots of conversations in regard, regards to their personal feelings.
Matters to me, I mean, that matters, I think, who's next?
Amy.
Amy.
Yeah, I, I've had just some brief conversations, very positive with my staff, um, either text or email of, I'm, I'm so excited, this is the direction that we're going. Um, I do have one or two that are hesitant for some family health concerns, and I think we'll address those and work with them. Um, but overall, I have had some very positive things, but again, just questions, and then willing to, I've had everybody say, let me know what I can do to help, let me know what I can do to help, um, in the planning and being a part of this.
Amy, and you're just real quick, I'm gonna put you on the spot, sorry, but would you recommend either have it be required or highly encouraged? Just from a wording standpoint in a, in a document?
And you're referring to masks at all times?
No, with it, so if you're, if you're sitting down, so if you're within three feet, you gotta, you gotta wear them. But if you're outside, if you're, let's say you're four feet away, sitting at a desk, at a desk, no plexiglass in place, or you're individual desks and they're four feet away in a classroom, should it read required the kids that wear the mask? Or should it read highly encouraged?
You are putting me on the spot.
I know.
You know, I really think as we get comfortable in no more things, as we get started, I think off the bat, I think required would be a good way to go. Uh, and I think as we get back and learn things and figure out what it's like to have us all back in one room and have our staff figure out a, a new style of teaching, because it is gonna be different, stay in a way. Um, I think we can get more comfortable and our kids can become more independent as we teach them, you know, what is appropriate and how you speak a little bit differently, how you keep your distance. Um, I think starting tighter, in my opinion, is probably better right now. And as we learn things, then we can always let up.
Perfect, thank you.
Stacy and also then Cindy is next.
I wanna interject, let's, let's listen to them first. But, but I do, the only thing is we won't get, that's a semester commitment. Because if, if I'm choosing between online learning or in the classroom learning, I may choose in the classroom learning if I know masks are gonna be on for the semester, and then I can't back up according to how we have it written now. So that's the only thing I wanna add to, to, as we're talking about.
I think that's.
If we change from phase one to phase two, it changes.
Yes.
Your point.
Yeah, okay, um, Stacy?
And, and maybe this is splitting in here or there, I don't know, is there any, um, what about the word expected? Like masks are expected, does that, to me, it ramps up from encouraged, obviously, like that's our expectation that you have them on, but it's not quite as, like, you know, there's never a situation where it would be on, which I think required kind of connotates to me, but.
Gotcha, not that it would be up to an individual student's choice, but that expected.
Expected also.
I see what you're saying. Um, Cindy, did you have something to?
I would say for my part, staff anxieties that I have heard do seem to stem from if kids don't wear masks and I'm in a classroom with twenty-seven kids. Now, I have not talked to all staff members, I don't know that that's, you know, uh, exemplifies a huge number of staff, but I will say staff anxieties that I've heard comes from that. So that is something just to throw out for consideration. Um, and also I, I appreciate Amy's comment about to have it, to start a little tighter is easier as far as if things lighten up, that things get better, if once we see Iowa State and Ames get started and we can feel better about how things are in our area, then maybe loosening the reins is a little easier. Those are just a couple dots.
All right, Mike, it's your turn.
I, in my building, the way I, I said, as I said earlier, um, I can get three feet, but I can't have them facing the same direction. So if there's no, so it's gonna be three feet and a barrier, and if I can't get barriers, then they're gonna be wearing masks, because I can't get three feet with them facing the same direction, which is what the, the three feet guidance is. So my building, maybe my rooms are a little different than, than theirs in terms of, of space, but I'm gonna have to layer mitigation of whether it's three feet and a barrier or, or kids wearing masks.
And what about outside, like Greece, uh, yeah, oh, Ashley was gonna.
Ashley?
All right, all I was gonna say was, um, thinking about the six feet to the three feet, and all the other sites and sources have cited six feet, and we have six feet all in lots of different places. And then we have the WHO and the AAP that have set three feet, and we're going with three feet, and we can get people in. But if we start, like all of the administrators said, starting tighter and then loosening, because we're already cutting other guidance that is, credit guidance out there in half at the three feet.
Okay.
So what, what I'm hearing is, to start off with, it could be as simple as face coverings required when inside. Cause would there be any scenarios where they wouldn't?
I think that's just a six feet, or if there's, if there's three feet distancing and barriers.
But even so, I think even the barriers are gonna have it on the table, so if there's somebody in front of them, that's probably gonna be within six feet. Just from visualizing the classroom centers.
Lunch would be the other issue.
Yeah, if you put, have a lunch. I'm not trying to say, I, I, I understand that this went from all the time to this. What I'm trying to say is right up there, we say when three distant, when three feet distancing cannot be maintained.
And I, I'm more in favor of the, the, the middle school and high school and given the flexibility for the intermediate and the elementary.
Do we want them to go there at the?
Or the intermediate?
We, um, can, the extent to which we settle this now, I think we will revisit it in, on August tenth, because we will have heard from staff and we will have heard somewhat about numbers. So, um, it's my opinion that we will revisit it, because we are asking, if you're on the fence, what's the reason you're on the fence? And it could be because we are not requiring masks or because we are. Um, is it better to leave that and to say, and to get this as?
No, we gotta make a decision.
I think so too, but, um.
And I, and, and this in no way says I think we should really have the emphasis on protecting teachers. And so this is discussing with students, and so now I'm saying, what can we do to mitigate? If I am an elementary, uh, student and I have these young kids that are gonna really struggle with mask-wearing, now how can I redouble my efforts if I'm an elementary teacher to make sure that we even have additional safeguards on now? Um, that, 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 so they aren't necessarily opposed.
Yeah, and Stacy, I think, has commented that most of the time they're gonna be wearing these face shields, but that's.
And that's one other thing, I do have, in all my classrooms, they have a teaching zone that's six feet from where kids start. So we do have that built into our, um, our, our classrooms.
I, personally, I, if I'm the holdout here, um, I can be comfortable with, I think that, that, um, I think I wanna take an out with instructed by leaders, I would like it to go at least to expected. Um, and then on August tenth, by then, I want to have heard from our teachers on what this means, and is that strong enough? Because ultimately, um, they are employees, are, you know, not our direct employees, but, um, we're asking them to come and stay here, and they, the, the, I haven't heard anybody say that it doesn't pass to older, to people. You know, we, we've mentioned, and there's some guidance that says not about kids. Um, I understand where it puts us, I understand this and that, but, um, I think it, I think we're making it just as hard on ourselves by trying to kind of straddle this. I think you always need to add an out for students.
How long will we, uh, so we just threw out at the beginning this conversation, well, this is through the end of September, it's the first three weeks, it's whatever. Um, I, I think we also, at this point on, on today, we need to say, well, this would be our approach beginning on August twenty-seventh, and we revisit it.
I don't know, two weeks is enough to revisit that, but I, I think there's a period of time which we should.
Well, I'm just saying, I think that's as important as anything for me.
Yeah.
And because, because I think we will learn, but I, I don't know that we're gonna learn anything sitting in here or reading in more documents, more than those folks, those important folks that are on the Zoom right now, experiencing what is this, what's, what's reality here for what we can get done.
Yeah.
And all I'm saying is, to be fair to the parents, this should reflect reality, not something that we say, but we can't do.
Absolutely, I one hundred percent agree with that.
And I just think we need to have the building thing, I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all.
I didn't.
No, no, I'm just saying for, I, I think when we say required mask, I, I think it's different in elementary and intermediate school, because they got younger kids.
Uh, for tonight, I would suggest that once we get to when three feet distancing cannot be maintained, we strike when instructed by the teacher, we strike the, the whole last bullet point. If anything, I think I'd like to hear what the recommendations are from the staff with regard to outdoors. Because I think if I'm a parent, I wanna know, okay, it sounds like it's gonna be pretty tight inside, are they gonna be able to take their face coverings off outside?
Are you asking them now?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we should have this, I think we should vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I agree, I'm with that.
Stacy, face coverings outdoors.
No, okay.
Amy was.
Amy, I think is, there she is.
There she is.
Face coverings outdoors, well, and assuming that they're three feet, are you still saying, or just like?
Uh, they're not gonna be three feet outdoors, I mean, let's be honest.
But they're gonna, but like Stacy, right, she, cool, right now, right now, there's all a hundred together. Now she's gonna say, I got twenty over here, that's the coworkers, right?
I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair.
Amy?
Me and you guys, I, I don't know that I can guarantee I can keep kids three feet apart outside.
Oh, I think I was wrong when I said three feet, were you asking that?
I'm just asking face coverings outside.
So is outside the same expectation as inside with three feet apart?
I don't.
My opinion, no. That's ba, that's, that's based upon transmission outdoors as much, it, it, it's hardly even documented. So the concern is indoors, but that's just my opinion. But I think we should have something in this that says, when they're outdoors, what are, what's the scenario for face coverings?
This is right here on the document, it says outdoors if in close contact with another person for fifteen minutes. Are we asking that? I mean, we're just, I feel like we're just putting these guys on the spot and saying yes or no, and I feel like we need to give them something.
What I'm doing, Deb, is I'm trying to see what they believe to be realistic, and then let's put that in this requirement. I already suggested that we just strike the entire last bullet point, so I'm just saying, what's the outdoors say? Mike, Cindy?
How about leaving that where it says encouraged? And then, you know, we're really covered already, the part where it says face coverings are encouraged when indoors and in space with other people, that's defined above under required, correct?
Yep.
So what if we said encouraged, and this would be a question for other, and of course, encouraged, outdoors if in close contact with another person for fifteen minutes, would everybody feel comfortable with that? Because we're not requiring it, so that's important to note. At the same time, we're saying, hey, feel more comfortable, and you are in a certain situation with your class, that it makes more sense wearing, but we're not putting us in such a tight box.
I like that suggestion, Cindy, I love it.
Okay, Stacy, did you give a thumbs up, or were you?
Sorry, I was touching my face.
You're not supposed to do that, Stacy, sorry.
I have some hand sanitizer.
I, I didn't mean to call you out like that, I thought you were, I, why do we have you here? What do you think of that recommendation? Encouraged for, encouraged if in close contact with another person for fifteen minutes, outdoors.
Yeah, I think, um, for us, just from the makeup of like face shields, I think we would likely not have them on face shields out, but we do have a system that we talked about so that they always have the mask with them, um, so I think we can, you know, work through that.
Okay, Mike had his hand up. Mike?
I was just gonna say that my plan is to have them on masks outside because I can't guarantee distance, and I think if I leave it up to the kids, they're not gonna wear them. Um, you know, they already don't wear coats, and they literally, they don't wear pants, and literally, they wear shorts outside to prove who's tougher and, and a lot of times maybe who's dumber, so, um, I, I was just planning on having them on a mask, I know that stinks, but if I can get barriers, they won't have to wear them at most of the day in class. Um, so, but I can't, I can't keep those kids apart, they, you know, they, it, it would be too much to ask, uh, I think at the middle school level.
Okay. So, um, can I make, I like the idea of removing that when instructed by teacher. What about when three feet distancing or barriers cannot be maintained, making it required?
Physical barriers.
Physical barriers? To, whether we just add that to that second to the last bullet?
So then the question would be, is if the plexiglass doesn't come, then we can't start school?
I think that we've got a lot, no, that means then masks. That's all that means, but we've heard that we've got it all over town, we could probably be driving out to get it now. I don't, I, I also heard every single one of them say that it's easier to be tighter and then looser than it is to be loose and start tight. That's my, that is where, listen, if we've got, if we're gonna vote on it, that's where I feel the most comfortable. If you guys feel like that is too much, then I think you just need to say it and.
Yeah, and I, but again, I talked to John's account earlier, though, you know, we, we gotta be somewhat, if we're gonna say it and then, uh, uh, tell t, tell parents they gotta make a decision for a semester, or, and then we're saying, well, two weeks to revisit it, I don't think that's fair to the parents who would say, well, I don't, my kids aren't gonna wear masks. Okay, well then, you can't come for a whole semester, then in a month, we say, oh yeah, you can take off the mask now.
But I think that's, remember, the people who are in, in the school can make the choice to go online. I don't think that people who are.
No, what are you not saying, we're saying we're masked now.
I'm worried about the inverse, actually, that I think everybody's going to be wearing a mask, and so that I did, I hopped out of the online version. So now I'm here physically.
And then you can choose to go online, that's open.
No, I'm, I'm saying this again, if I, I'm just playing, so if I say, okay, my daughter is, like, she's not gonna wear a mask, there's no way she's wearing a mask, and, and we require a mask.
Okay.
She's not gonna send her to school.
Oh, I got you.
And then all of a sudden, September tenth, we as a board say, oh, we're gonna loosen that now a little bit. Well, now I, I have no option to send Emily back.
I got you.
That's what my worry is, is that we're, we're giving ourselves an out after three weeks, but we're not giving the parents a chance to come back in.
If they say that they're not going because we.
So why don't I say, if we, whatever we decide today, we also have a chance to say, if we change it, we will then reach out to all the online parents and say, hey, you have the option now, if we change whatever we changed for mitigation efforts. At that time, if they wanna opt back in, they can. Cause I just think if, if that's where they make a decision, I think we have to do that.
So, so to move along this question, I would be in favor of the middle school and high school requiring the mask with, with, if there's only three feet and no barrier, and I would be for the elementary and the intermediate school to, or, or expected.
Expected.
That's my, that's my motion.
And I actually, I'm gonna agree with Tyler as well.
Is that a, so your motion, can I restate it?
So we were just now voting on faith for, uh, just.
I'd say this does, with those, with those models.
I haven't heard any, I haven't heard any discussion or complaints besides.
I wanna, I wanna hear from the group on that, though, now.
Okay, so the idea was for the.
Required for middle school and high school, expected for elementary and intermediate. Go ahead, Mike.
When he said when three feet and barriers cannot be maintained?
Yeah, I just was gonna ask that as a final question, so if I have three feet and a barrier, I don't have to wear a mask?
Yep, you're finished, yes, you got it. Yep, you got it.
Right.
Okay, okay, good.
Yep.
And we including face shields to be face covered?
Yeah, we should say face coverings, we should say face coverings, okay.
Would you guys all be okay with that, thumbs up, thumbs down?
We have Amy thumbs up, we have thumbs up, we have thumbs up from all four.
Okay.
Okay, did you, did you see that? Did we want to?
And expected, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, so, John, is that the motion?
Absolutely.
That we have that, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? So this would be accepting this document in with those changes documented?
Yep.
The last resolutions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Gail, did you get that?
I think so, middle school, high school require if three feet cannot be.
Three feet and barriers.
And then elementary school and intermediate is expected.
Good.
We're going to strike, we're going to strike out the when instructed by teacher, the other things we discussed as well, you got it.
Uh, Carrie, anybody has any questions about that before we leave? Okay, sorry about that.
That was, that was very good.
It was an important conversation to have, thank you for bringing that to.
Deb, your, your opinion is probably 50% of opinions too, so again, you need to speak up and have that voice in a way you did.
Okay, well, I appreciate us having that and then coming to that agreement.
So that was, that was resolution on reopening plan, we didn't state, will we revisit it? Or do we even want to state that? We just, we just know that we're going to revisit it and just leave it at that?
It's living, I mean, it's a living document, it's living, we just, I think it's going to be revisited every board meeting.
I think almost, almost every.
I think we need to talk about it, I think it needs to be meeting about dates, feedback, what we're hearing, what.
In my experience, it's nothing close to black and white.
Yeah.
That will be it, everybody in agreement, are we leaving it at that, understanding that as of this date, we are saying parent choice and we are reopening plan with this mitigation in place, as well as other options that will be laid out that the different buildings have come up with?
Right.
Mike, yep?
Just to clarify, so like at PE, for example, if I can get six feet of space, I don't have to wear a mask, correct? Six feet is.
Correct.
Is okay?
Correct.
Okay.
And should we put, should we just call that out in there?
Probably, yeah, I think we should.
Tyler, I want to make sure you're okay with like that, that's what I've seen in all of the guidance, says six feet or more, none.
But, 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 but no, there, there's, yeah, six feet's okay, but if both are wearing masks, then it lowers it even more, and so, so we have to be mindful of, of that at some point in time, if we're saying, hey, we're looking for the moderate level of risk, then we're good with the six feet and, and no mask.
Yep.
What about the four day schedule, is that we getting on that now?
We're not, I don't believe that was actually presented, or was it?
It's in the, it's in this hybrid parent choice.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to back up.
Yeah, because that's.
Let's make, so let's be clear about this, we voted on this mitigation.
Just, just on the mitigation.
On the mitigation document, that should be done, let's back up and be more clear now about this, I'm sorry, I don't need to jump this in, so within this, the parent choice hype, the parent choice option that Carrie has laid out, I see onsite, students will participate face-to-face learning at school four days a week and once a week remotely. Is that, does that a district, is that a, is that something that we're saying as of now, that this is what we're moving the four day plan?
It's a recommendation from the.
Recommended to assess this.
That would be for the, the timing of that, is the one question I have, is that for the semester, or for the first month, or, you know, what's your thoughts on that?
I would think for the semester.
I, it, it kind of is what, I'm going to go with what Andrew said, and the fact of it being a living document, and personally, in the, in the near future, I would not see it changing, but I can't predict the future. Now, I think it's important to know that that Wednesday, which is collaboration, PB, online, all that stuff, the expectation, we will have to take attendance that day, because if we do not take attendance, and we do not have online happening, we can't count that as a student contact.
So we don't get minutes for that.
That's correct.
So we have to have.
Yes, so I just, I want to, I don't want to send a mixed message here.
But what I think we have to nail it down is for two working parents, oh.
Yes.
I, I need to know that.
Um, and I want to, that brings up another question, what I have, John, I would like to know when we are going to open up to Kids Club, to get Kids Club back, because I believe that's an option as well, for some of these, right?
Right, the concern, the concern, we talked about that when we were down at the elementary today, is that we'll have 35 kids, it'll be.
They're usually in one space, they're not all running throughout the building, right?
I, I understand, but if you're, are, are we going to have the same guidelines?
The same cohorts too, right?
It is a real, the social distancing may be a challenge in that setting.
And again, I don't need to like, be on this side of it, but we're making our, our whole building do it, I don't know why we wouldn't ask Kids Club to do the same.
I agree with you 100%, I'm on the same page.
I just wanted to make sure you were saying that, so.
Yeah, but it's how many people this Kids Club have.
Yeah.
Can we, can we handle that separately, and focus on our return, our reopening please?
Yes, that was in, it was in response to a question about what do we do for younger kids, so, four days is what you're saying at this point?
I'm saying, I, I would rather have parents have that earmarked, and if we say, you know what, we, we feel we can do the half a day, then that's great too, but I, I think we have to put that on the table right now, so, so families can think.
Okay.
That, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, so we're kind of trying to present like a worst case in a sense, is that what you're saying by that? Could be a half a day?
Yeah, it, yes, but.
Your thoughts?
And then I see fully remote, students will participate in remote learning, students will be provided a device, preschool iPad, K through two, K through two touchscreen tablet, Chromebook, forms will be available for students, parents to submit for this option on July 29th, this will be a semester basis, traditional homeschool.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's just the regular.
Part of, part of the four day a week, at least that I've heard that intrigues me is if it is selected to be Wednesday, and I think, Mike, it was some of your comments when we toured your school, where you said, be thinking about the stamina of both the kids and the staff, they haven't been in school since the middle of March, and now all of a sudden, we're bringing them back, which is what we all want to do, but if, if we think that a, a day a week will be important, that, that it'll be a great organizational day for the teachers and the staff, also allowing remote learning, but it is also to start to build the stamina, my, my question would be, do we really commit to a whole semester, which if that's what everybody says, yeah, that's what we need to do, or is that the first six weeks, because, and, and my mindset is with that whole conversation that Mike provided about stamina, right, so, okay, now that at that point, have we learned enough, do we know how this is going, we've adjusted for remote teachers, remote learning, whatever that looks like, but I would, I would support four days, I would suggest, I like the idea of it being Wednesday, because that, to me, makes it that much more of a break from in-person, but my question would be, is that for a whole semester, or is that for six weeks, or whatever?
Well, and I think too, when you say that, that we have a, you know, a little bit of dipstick from our June survey of parents, but the numbers of remote versus onsite are going to, would drive this a little bit as well, in the amount of, but that's just another piece to the puzzle.
I kind of.
I like Wednesday too, because it's not a three-day weekend, that's why I get it. Wednesday, it's, they're still expected online learning, they're expected, they're going to meet the minutes, this isn't a day off, you can go do whatever you want for three days, I, I, again, I want to hear from everybody, but I, I want to do it for a window of time first, and I want to have a chance to say, this is going to be great, I don't, to me, to commit to a semester, I think is a little crazy, I'd like to set a date, maybe through October 2nd, it would put us through, that's that last four weeks of, you know, that's a good idea, so by our September board meeting, we could decide, hey, then we'll then, we'll give staff and parents enough time, two or three weeks in advance, to say, we are going to continue this, or we're going to end this, but I also think if we're going to do that, we need to give the parents an opt-in standpoint with the online, because if we're going to, if we change the game a little bit, because at that same time, that's September 10th, I'm thinking, if we're going to change the game with four, let's just say, we can change it from 40 to five days, we can change the mask, same, whatever, as a parent who decides, I'm not comfortable, and we change it, the rules, when now they are comfortable, I think they have the right to come back into the school, it's just my thoughts, and again, I.
It's like a certain amount of leeway, I mean, not leeway.
If we don't change anything, I mean, but I said, if we're going to change the rules, they, and my, my, at that time, then we should be able to reach out to the online folks and say, hey, a couple great changes here, are you still, do you still want to have that or not, and, I mean, we can make it work by then, it's my thoughts on it.
I, what, what, one of the things that you just said, Andrew, on the fact of, if we have that, that six-week time set, and we say, okay, we are going to revisit it here, we are going to revisit it here, that's very different, now, the kicker on that is, if you, when you have a few go, if it becomes a little too fluid, then that is, that could affect staffing issues, so I think there's, that's a double issue.
Yeah, I agree, and I.
And I don't know the right, I really don't, it looks like.
Yeah, I don't either, I think we're going to go through a bunch of waves anyways.
Stacy, sorry, sorry, Andrew, sorry, Stacy?
You know, I, so what I think unintended consequence of Wednesday, is, as much as our kids will be essentially on the same scope and sequence in remote, online, and in the classroom, it would be unrealistic to say that come Wednesday, the kiddos who have been in the classroom are going to be at the exact same spot as the kids who are home, so my concern is, if we were to take the entire day, and I know teachers need planning, but I, I guess I'm advocating for more of a 12:30 early dismissal, because then we have some time built in, that we wouldn't necessarily need to replace the learning of the in-person kids going home, but at the same time, it would give us time to, to do some planning for the remote learning, because otherwise, I feel like what we're going to have is, our teachers now have three lesson plans to do, they have the remote online kids, the in-person, and then they have to figure out what to do with those in-person kids when they're home on Wednesday, I guess, that's, that's just my thoughts.
So I understood this to be that, we just said this was a, a point in time document, right now, I think if we're, if parents are looking to us, and we say, on July 20th, we say, we're looking at potentially a four-day week, and on August 10th, after we've had some feedback from parents, we have some idea of numbers, we then come back and say, you know what, that really looks like a four and a half day week, is that a bad thing? Like, does it, can there be a, at least, I think it's the easiest on parents to, to plan for additional days, I would hate to go with the reverse, but I, I do bring up, everybody brings up good points, I just wonder if this is, remember, we're trying to do based off of what we know now, and now we're trying to plan on the fly here, so, a thought, do we want to, do we want to look at this for what it is here, and again, we're going to vote again on August 10th, what are your thoughts? Are you, do you feel better knowing that, that we will have more detail, and they will have a chance to really have worked out some of this?
I think we have to nail it down as much as we can tonight, so that parents can start to say, this is what I want, and then we can get the response from the teachers of, you know, given these numbers that we're having coming back, you know, how many online teachers can we have, the teachers that aren't comfortable coming in the classroom, if we have these mitigating factors, you know, will that be enough for you to come back into the classroom, I don't really think, you know, whether Wednesday's four hours or eight hours will probably change a lot of, of what parents are deciding versus online or in class, and I could favor either one, you know, that, I would really look to the administrators to make the call on that, I'm, I'm in favor of having time to plan with all that's coming, even with just the COVID itself, and give you a chance to catch your breath, and sort through that as an administrative team.
I would agree, and I, I can't say more than the administrative team need to bring the recommendation, so is it all Wednesday, is it half Wednesday, what's the recommendation? And so, I don't know that we'll have that tonight, but we, what we're saying as a board is, yeah, there's additional time, or do you want to pick that it's a full day?
We might as well decide.
Yeah, let's go, Amy, Stacy gave her the opinion, Amy, what's your opinion real quick? On Wednesday?
Andrew, you are doing a heck of a job tonight.
No, it's 8:30, it's my bedtime.
We've got most of our agenda left.
Yeah.
Stacy made a really great point, and, you know, we are chatting here along the side, and I just, again, I said, I want to make sure we're on the same page too, on, realistically, do we think our online kids are going to move at the same pace as our face-to-face kids, or vice versa, and I, you know, this is all new to all of us, and I want to make sure what we put out is what we think is realistic for our teachers, and then what our kids are going to be expected to do, you know, it's a tough thing, because I, I'm not going to give you a short answer, sorry, Andrew, I know we said it's your bedtime, but.
I know.
I mean, our teaching need time, and I think our teachers and our staff are going to be on edge naturally, every day that we're here, because we're wanting to make sure that we put into place what, what it is that we're saying is expected and/or required, but they also need time to plan and be prepared, and I know the secondary courses and teachers and certifications take a different, take that to a different level than what Stacy and I have at the elementary, so I would, I would be in support of all, I don't know that I can say one or the other, to be honest, I, I think at the secondary, the full day gives them more opportunity for their teachers to really meet the needs of those online learners, but I also can argue, the more face-to-face time we have with our kids is best for them as well.
All right, thank you, Amy, Mike, what do you got?
Well, I was for a, a full day off that we, we, you know, slowly phased out, but Stacy brings up a really good point, that, as I sit here and think about it, I mean, she's right, if on that Wednesday, we send those kids home from online learning, it won't be the same lesson that remote kids are doing, maybe a half-day is the best way forward, I'm just sitting here thinking the, the three or four minutes since Stacy brought that point up, and as I'm thinking about it, it makes a lot of sense to me, so I guess that would be my, my inclination right now, the, the half-day.
Who's left, Cindy?
Cindy. I agree, I think that's a great point, that, that it'd be, it's unrealistic to plan, like Stacy said, unrealistic to, to teach online at the same pace, and as far as making a decision and putting in a two cents for the high school, I would say on this, I'd really prefer a little bit, we'll see if we do that for me.
You prefer what, a bit?
A point per bit, yeah.
If we did it just for the first six weeks, do we need the minutes on those days? Do we have to, would we achieve, would we achieve the minutes?
I would think you'd have to do some.
So that's six days?
Well, they, I mean, yeah, that would be six days, you're exactly right, and the thing on that is, I mean, we all, we have that time built in, but then, thinking of what happens in the winter with, like, it starts early, early, you know, dismissals due to weather, but it's the minute, so, I, I mean, Lindsay's going to have to speak to that, that's.
That's a call.
I.
Go ahead, go ahead, Stacy.
I know, our current calendar has 29 hours about the 10 a. m., so I think.
Oh, 29 hours, did you hear?
We necessarily have six.
Go ahead.
She's saying something that might help.
Like, six days would be 36 hours for us, that we would count on a typical Wednesday, so I feel like if we were talking a whole day, we'd be, we would need at least some of those minutes to be captured, I think then, the other piece of the calendar is, you know, that maybe would be helpful, is we can use some online learning opportunities for weather-related closure, so I think maybe, in the past four days that we've lost time, we may be able to find some ways to recapture that, but ultimately, if it's, if we're talking about all those hours, we would not have enough built into our calendar.
Are we going back to school on Labor Day? I know some school districts are.
Back to school on Labor, as opposed to the.
Are we having school on Labor Day?
Oh, back to school on Labor Day, I'm sorry.
That one's not on our calendar, is it?
No, no. Because I, I mean, the whole stamina thing kind of goes away if we're doing a half a day, and everybody's going to be busy, I mean, it sounds like you're almost going to be busier, my, my suggestion to think about would be, let's, let's try this break day, Wednesdays, and do it for five weeks.
Yeah, so if we do the, school starts on 27th, if we go through Septembers, we'd have five Wednesdays, if we then, if we went through the week of August 2nd, August 2nd is a Friday, so we have five Wednesdays.
I think you don't have October.
I'm sorry, October 2nd, so August 27th starts school, this is our plan through October, the week of October 2nd, which is a Friday, there'd be five Wednesdays, so what I propose is, let's just, for the initial start, be safe, shut down Wednesdays for five weeks, I still do the, we'll do online learning, so we really should.
So we're still going to take attendance?
Still going to take attendance, okay, that's my question. Yeah, I think we should do that, just, and then just, almost. Yeah, I think we should do that, just, and then just, almost kinda feel it out here for five weeks, get a feel for it. Cause what I don't want is the half-day, which I love the idea, we may go to it, but I also worry about getting them on the bus, throwing them off the bus, feeding them lunch, doing this. We're going through all those same issues, and then we're just home here for a half-day and we're shooting them out. So we still got all the issue, and the cleaning.
Talking about September 14th?
Huh?
Would we, would we talk about it then, September 14th? And it would give, um, a couple, at least a couple of weeks' notice.
We're still doing the remote.
Yeah, it will still be a.
It would be this, it would be this recommendation.
But the only downside to it is it just brings that third layer of, of preparation to it, and the, and the, okay, now we gotta figure out what that online Wednesday's gonna look like. Yeah, so there's two online versions then.
And I think you gotta look at it too, is you don't know what your, your people that are gonna want to go remote. If that's 2%, that may be enough.
Right.
If that's 40%, that could be huge.
Well, and we just don't know.
We don't hear that, no.
I mean, we, as we know better, we learn better and we make adjustments. So, once again, I'm gonna pull us back to this document, this document right now, and, um, I think that let's, I like that idea, let's go with this. Four days, so one day a week where they will not be onsite, um, through October 2nd. And then we will discuss September 14th, how we will proceed from there. And I wanna, then we can hear more in on August 10th of the details of what that day will look like.
On the Wednesday, we're doing the remote.
You guys can figure out exactly what that is, yeah, and bring that back. Is that, that is.
Yeah, if minutes can be achieved, then you can minimize the amount of remote for the in-person students. That is truly an opportunity for them.
And you'll have some indication, yep.
And early on, it's gonna be, I know there's gonna have different, you know, online versus in-person, but when school's just starting out, it's, it's getting pretty close starting out, I would assume.
Yeah.
And as you hear it goes on, there may be some separation up or down. So, well, I make a motion to approve the Parents' Choice, uh, hybrid learning model with Wednesdays being off through the week of October 2nd. And we would be online learning on those Wednesdays.
Are you also making the adjustment and clarifying, can I clarify this motion? Are you making the adjustment about having, allowing movement back and forth?
Yes, I, I forgot about that one. So, yeah, I would like to make the, so at that, if we make adjustments to our plan, the online, parents have the option to back in to our school, online, onsite learning.
For that date-specific thing, and then we can close it down the rest of the semester.
Correct, yeah.
So what, one thing is, I'm hearing you say that, Andrew, I'm wondering, is if we just make the official date October 2nd?
That might be.
Instead of, of this, then it's.
That's fine.
They, they've been in it for six weeks, is it really working for them?
Well, that's really, that's the hard cutoff. So our cutoffs are gonna be August 10th, whatever that date was, and then also October 2nd.
Yes.
So first cutoff, and then we're gonna go, then we're gonna commit through October 2nd. And October 2nd's the final commitment for the rest of the semester.
So you, you have a window to, to test drive it.
Correct, yeah, that's good, I like that.
Oh, and we, okay.
Well, and those, those parents, they're high school parents. I hate to say this one at a time.
Should we, maybe after this? Their counter stand.
One for the other.
He said he'd go live.
He said I.
He said, yeah, then that would be the same thing. You're right.
So just, is it okay for me to restate that motion?
Yes, go ahead.
So, Andrew, what you had stated was that you had made a motion to accept this plan, um, and that we will take four days a week through October 2nd. Um, that, that we will allow student, or that parents will make a choice, um, by October, uh, August 12th, and then again, October 2nd, by a date prior to October 2nd. Is that right? To adjust for when those changes take place? Did I say that right?
Yep, and Wednesday, Wednesday would be the day off, and it would be online learning on Wednesday.
And we will adjust, I will adjust those dates in here, so that, that October 2nd is reflected in that.
There may be some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should we wait till they come back?
He already said aye.
He said aye. All those in favor, aye? Can we have a forum?
Aye.
Aye, okay, aye.
Just to break this up, we're upset.
Can we take?
We're upset and nothing.
Yes.
Three, nothing, right now, just in case we want to.
John, do you want an update on what happened?
I do. I feel much more, less anxious now.
We made, there was a motion to accept this, direct October 2nd, with the, a second decision point for parents. I believe it was just what we said when we were in the room.
Aye.
Aye.
Got it, Dan.
Okay, I think we're moving on to the next item in the agenda. Are we, I know that we just took this short路, but I would, I would ask that we can maybe get through this next item, so Sam here, as a family.
Sorry, Sam.
Next item on the agenda, what's that?
Yeah, it's like a study hall, right?
And Adam, I'm sorry. Adam is online as well. So item 602, construction, so we all have an update. Um, is that by Adam or by Sam? Is it by construction updates and budget summary?
Yeah, I'm here.
I think Adam can give maybe a construction update in terms of where things are at, and then talk about, we wanna talk about seeding a little bit tonight as well, just to make sure everyone's on the same page with that too. That's.
Thank you.
Yeah. Adam, you gonna give an update on just like punch lists, and when are we expecting to have those items done?
Yes, uh, there are six to 10, I think, items left on the punch list. I know, uh, four of them got, came up today, so they're marked off the list. Um, um, they are set to be done by the end of this month. Um, down at the baseball fields, um, fencing's done, batting cages are up. We're holding off on putting the, um, net system behind the plate, as well as the windscreen and the padding up until next spring. Otherwise, the school would have to take it down, and truthfully, we'll probably take the nets down too, the batting cages, and turn them over to the school. Um, uh, there are some lights at the middle school that were ordered, or some diffusers that were ordered that have been backordered for a long time now. I was told yesterday, or not yesterday, Friday, that they should be here in two weeks. So those are the diffusers for the activity areas. Um, for the most part, everything else is complete.
Okay.
So, um, to get into the seeding part of it, um, we've been in discussions with the field contractor, uh, with recommendations from the engineer, um, on how to proceed, and they have agreed to, um, to reseed as early in August as they can, no later than 15th. Um, if it, if the temperature cools down in early August, that's when they would get out and be able to seed. If not, it would be the 15th or later. Um, they're confident that they will, uh, be able to be at everything seeded and have the grass in a condition next spring that all athletics will be able to take places on the fields, um, as planned.
So, kind of a clarifier there, and, um, what we're waiting for is an official plan from the seeding company, um, addressed to the district. Um, I think Adam's had a handful of conversations with, uh, the folks from the seeding company, but just to make it official and formal, um, myself and Tim West, who's with Snyder, the engineer that he's referring to, for, for, he's a civil engineer that handles these items, we wanna see that formal plan addressed to the district. And so Adam's working on that, uh, to get that to the district. Um, just to make things official and, and to maintain contractual arrangement, so. Um, and there's some formality that we wanna see in that pertaining to how they're addressing the original specifications and drawings, and then how that has morphed and changed slightly just due to circumstances, and then, um, that, so that to be followed into this, so-called this formal plan as well. So, it's making sure we don't lose the original contractual arrangement with the drawings and specs, but also taking into account recent and current situation that's led us to this point, so. Is it clear, the clarification there?
So I, I just have a question about the seeding. So if they're gonna reseed in August, which is good to prepare, so we're ready for, um, next season.
Yeah.
I mean, they seeded this first time, and it's just not acceptable. And so, like, how are we, what, what assurances do we have in place that, that this will in fact be successful this time? Is that what you were talking about, the plan?
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what this plan is supposed to do.
We'll sign off.
Now, it's not that, it's not that 100% of the area that's been seeded hasn't grown. There's some areas that's actually successful, it's not much, we understand that. Um, but this plan is basically the, the guarantee that we wanna see to, to make this happen in, by spring, that we get some grass by spring. Now, everyone will say, "Well, you can't guarantee that just because of, of mother nature," right? But, um, since we have irrigation system on the fields, and we can, we can put some foot measures in place, this plan, then everyone thinks that we should be able to do it. My, you know, Tim West with Snyder Engineering, uh, he thinks we can do it. Adam thinks we can, I think we can, as well as the Iowa Athletic Company and so.
Real quick, cause I just, Adam's a, obviously a father of a baseball player. Adam, what's your confidence level, that next spring, it's gonna look really nice when we open up?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Uh, I think it's gonna, um, it's gonna look well, I think it's gonna work. Uh, the old, I'm, I'm laying reference to other areas out there, and like Sam said, some areas came up well, some areas didn't. Um, I have confidence that if the contractor performs and does what we have requested of him, um, that they can control the amount of moisture and the coolness of the seed and everything else, and keep it in a condition that will promote good growth, and it will be ready to, uh, use next spring.
Can we go on record as a district, though, to say, "We did not plan it this season"? It would not be acceptable if we're not planning on it next season. So, that, that plan that you're talking about, they have to fulfill that. And if that doesn't mean that they can seed grass, does that mean that they will put sod down?
That, that's a good question. Um, that would, uh, probably not. I'd have to, I'd have to, uh, talk to the, the district attorney on whether or not that could be... Just because, cause sod would just be that much more expensive, quite a bit more expensive than the original contract, so.
But they haven't fulfilled their contract if that doesn't happen.
That's correct.
I'm, I'm with that from the standpoint of, if we can, and Adam, I hope you're right on. If we can go ahead and add grass there, same with you, Sam, that's great.
Yep.
But what happens if we can't?
So that's a, that's a good question. Um, I think that if, so we have a window of opportunity to plant grass seed this, this fall, and it starts August 15th, and I think it goes till end of September. So, there's a window there that if, if we're seeing a good plan before August, August 1st, even August 15th, and we're starting to work that plan, and there are some, maybe some milestones that we wanna see on that plan, then, okay, this, this could work. Um, but if August 15th comes around and they haven't even prepped the, the soil, and pulled some weeds and prepped it for the planting, then, then we start to say, "Okay, we're not seeing action on the plan that you had delivered, and you're, you're not following through." As time goes on, the chances of you being able to deliver a playable field, um, are, are less and less. We need to review removing this contractor and pulling someone else in. Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's then the question we start to, and we can ask that as soon as August 16th, if we don't start to see something move right away, so.
Hopefully it moves in the right direction.
It's not really about bringing in another contractor, it's about making sure we've got the corrections in place so we can play.
Yeah, but whether that's bringing on a new contractor who can respond, or what other changes need to happen at that point. Because if, if you don't make, if you're, if we don't get seed planted appropriately and watered in that window, then we're not gonna have, then it's over. We have one more chance this fall, and if it gets planted this fall, and it begins to grow and take root, then it goes dormant over the winter, and then in spring, it starts, then it'll come back even more full and fresh, that's the, that's the idea.
Did, did, uh, did we just lose irrigation, or why did we have such a poor stand?
That's a good question. And, and were you able to respond to that, why there's such a poor showing of grass, um, from the first go-around?
Uh, I think that after they seeded, there was a fairly heavy rain that washed a lot of the seed, I'll say, away or covered it up. Um, if it gets covered up with more sediment, it can't grow. Um, also, if there's too much water on it, it can't grow. So, um, there, I, I think within the first, I think it was the fifth or the sixth day, we got like three-and-a-half inches of rain, um, which, when you plant grass seed, you want rain, but you don't want that much.
So, so in theory, something should have been done by Iowa Athletic to remedy that problem, you know? And that, that obviously didn't happen, or if they did do something, it still didn't take, so.
So was there anything written into the contract on recourse? I mean, to Lindsay's point about, well, we're expecting a playable field?
Yeah.
What, I mean?
Yeah, the immediate thing is, you, you just don't pay them until, until something happens. That's, but that's, that doesn't get you.
Doesn't get us to play.
So, um, the, the notion of, of, let me, let me look at the contract and the specs and say, if it's in the, if it's in the language, but I don't know, I'd have to look at it, uh, that there is, there will be a playable surface regardless of sod, seed. Magic. I, you know, or whatever, then, then, then that, if they commit to that, then, then yes, they are on the hook to deliver a field, if, you know, potentially using sod. But I don't, I don't know if that's in the contract, I don't think that it is, but. But to answer your question in terms of recourse, um, I think I have to look into what the specific recourse would be, outside of just not paying it, but to deliver a field that's playable.
Sam, will there be any additional work around the buildings, the, the grass and the land around the buildings where we did projects? Whether that's the, around the bandroom, around the, the new technology area, around the middle school?
Yeah, this plan needs to incorporate, that we're looking forward to seeing, um, not just the fields, but everything, yeah. Yeah, and it's the same contractor who's on the hook to, to get those things in areas as well.
Okay. Right, thank you for that update. Any other questions about that? All right, um, looks like there are, uh, there's a list of the, the change requests and change directives, um, listed below, that is in FYI. Are there any that you would like to discuss? I noticed that a lot were, um, zero or, or negative, because there was a, a number of them that maybe offset, but are there anything, is there anything that anyone on the board would like to pull up? Okay. Um, on to the next item, which are the change orders. So we have a listing here of, um, of the change orders that are, what is, do we have a total of this? Of all of them, some total? I know sometimes, I know we used to have a spreadsheet, but I don't.
Oh, it should be negative.
It was only negative?
I think it was around negative three.
Negative three dollars?
Um, I'm saying three thousand.
Three thousand, negative three something?
Yeah, I did a tally, and then I did bring my sticky out with me.
Got it.
How about it's a, it's a, it's a credit?
It's a credit, I don't care what it is.
I move to approve the change orders.
Aye.
Any other discussion about these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those change orders pass. Um, and then we have, the, the next item is accepting the following substantial completion forms and final payment applications, as being fully complete and established the date of acceptance as July 20th, 2020. Payments will be out for 31 days. Uh, there's one here for a construction group, uh, 316 Construction Group. Do you have any questions about that, is that, is that a fair action? Yeah. Yes. Any questions about that from the board?
We had it last month, um, so this is the, the process that we're using to go on record, so we have documentation.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve. Oh, I second.
Okay, well, John, John motion, you.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, are we done with, did we move on past the agenda?
Sam waited two and a half hours for five.
Sorry, Sam.
It's all right.
Well, you laughed on past, though, didn't you?
No, I'm glad we get you some questions, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam, thanks, Sam.
There are a number of things here, um, that still require a little bit of conversation. Um, is, does anybody else need to take a quick break?
I am going to, but you can. I am going to, but you can just keep going.
Just keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. So item 603, apparently I'm going to have to talk. No. Okay. Item 603, consider bids for bakery, dairy, and petroleum products. So this is an annual thing that we do. Gail, do you want, or who's going to talk this?
It doesn't matter. You can look at what we have for the dairy. Anderson Erickson was the one, I mean, she highlights where they're, they're the...
The lowest.
Yeah. Anderson Erickson looks like four, as you look across. You can look at where the, the figures are. Is that Bimbo, is that what that's?
Yes, every year we talk about that.
Bimbo Bakery is the one for the bakery. And then we go down to the petroleum, and under that one, I believe it's the one down at the bottom, which is that Martin?
Yes, Martin Oil.
Okay. And we tried to, we've had this discussion, it seems like each year, what's the rack price? And then rack price, and then they add on a certain amount, so... That's different. We haven't been with Martin Oil, but as far as the price, that's the price, I believe, that was last Wednesday. I have to check and see in my notes, but I wanted to kind of get something that we could base it on. So the recommendation would be Martin Oil, Bimbo Bakery, and Anderson Erickson.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve Anderson Erickson, Bimbo Bakery, and Martin Oil. Is there a second?
I, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain from voting. I had one of them who does business with Martin Oil.
Oh, absolutely. Should we wait for Tyler to come back?
Wait for Tyler.
Did you want to take a break now?
Yeah. Shoot, sorry about that. I do not know, thank you for saying that. Oh, hear me.
Not positive either, but I have one air inside question.
Got it.
Hey, Gilbert did win since we're, we're in discussion. They won eight to nothing.
What was the score?
Eight to nothing.
Hey, Tyler, we have, we'd like to catch you up on this piece of it. Did you get a chance, there is a motion from Andrew to accept the bids for AE Dairy, Bimbo Bakery, and Martin Oil as the low bids. John refrained because there's a possibility that he might have working with some of them.
I'm not working with them.
So we're looking for a second. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And John abstained. Ready? Okay, so those bakeries pass, or those bids pass. Next on the agenda is the 2020-21 legislative priorities. Now, I don't remember this, I know we do this every year. I don't remember if we've had like this spread out vote in the past.
I've got it narrowed down.
We have it narrowed down.
Yes, so number seven, number eight, and number 19. Now, we need one more.
And number 19 are read upon or have the most votes?
Have the most votes, if we're going by votes.
Okay, so that is mental health, that is special education, I think state.
Supplemental state aid.
Supplemental state aid.
Yeah.
And then 19 would, yeah, 19 is the supplemental state.
Right, and we need one more. And so that was the number five votes and three votes. Now we're down to two, the votes of two people. And so your options are preschool, number three, number 18, school funding policy, or number 20, property tax.
And mine were seven, eight, 15, and 19, I was trying to get them.
And didn't you have 12, too?
You did five, he did five?
No, I can't do five.
Yeah, I thought you had number 12.
Well, you got my numbers in there.
Yep, I do have your numbers in there.
Scratch that, I didn't know that.
I had you down for number seven, number eight, number 19, and number 12. And 12 was, I can't remember what 12 was.
Okay, no, that's good. As long as you're in there, I just wanted to make sure.
I did not go with teacher recruitment and licensure. Oh, that's not the, that's not of the two.
What was the, sorry, what was the numbers?
So property taxes, number three, preschool. Number 18, school funding policy, or number 20, property taxes.
I'm actually okay with any of those. Is there, what do we... Is there any of those that, that you guys did not vote for that you would consider interesting?
It doesn't matter.
I think we're at a point where property taxes, we need to make sure because funding's going to be critical, but I, you know... School funding is kind of one of those, every year it's the same conversation, right?
Exactly.
Property taxes might be unique.
I'll second.
So it would be seven, eight, seven.
Our Tyler.
Tyler motion, I second.
Okay.
You go ahead, seven, eight.
Seven, eight, 19, and I believe you said 20.
Property taxes, John.
And then, is that your motion, Andrew?
Okay, so we have...
Tyler first, Andrew second.
Yep, the board representative. Deb, were you, you were last year's representative that went down? Okay, so do you still want to keep that?
Yeah, I'll do that. I don't care, I'll get that.
I just don't want to miss that piece till I also...
I got it now, I get how to do it now, so I'll do it again.
It's not too, too bad if you use it then.
No, it's not too bad if you get it. So seven, eight, two. Tyler, you motioned and Andrew seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now we're moving on to 605. Do we have this chart up here?
This is where, okay, the next two items. 605 is a first reading of those next group that we're going through annually, or like every five years to review. And this is the document here that, no, this is the...
This is the COVID ones, you don't want that one yet?
This is the COVID one, yeah. We want the one that was 620, I think.
606 is all COVID related, all the new updated ones that we talked about.
We haven't done 605 yet, though.
Nope, nope.
That's coming. So that, yes, this is... Start that. Yeah. So basically, here's the change.
And we don't have that table, the side of the table with the recommendations for these?
Let me pull out that some minutes.
Yeah. I think that has it. There's one suggestion that I think we want to make on one of the, that is different from the table. Sorry about this, Gail.
Seven, 703.
703, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so you'll see that there were virtually no changes, right? This is, this is a recommendation by the board. In some cases, we were electing to choose, but Gilbert hadn't simply updated the references. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know.
We did have one change after this.
Yep. Is that 210?
And that is...
Was it the 504.6? That was one of the middle school activities.
No, it's 210.5.
210.5, okay. This is, this is the one where we were looking at this and, so this references Iowa law here, right? And there's that public notice will be posted, all of this is true. We have one that says, "A copy of public notice will be provided to those who have filed a request for notice with the secretary." In reality, that does not match Iowa law. Iowa law makes that, that is a, we will give that, that copy for those, when the media requests it. So we would make a special copy available. We would not necessarily be extending ourselves to then go beyond what Iowa requires and then provide public notice or a special notice to anybody who asked. So this is a, this is a situation where we're simply asking that we just match Iowa law by, by making that one, that one switch to include the word "media" to, to more specifically address what was intended.
And everything else?
Everything else is based on the same.
Yep, everything else is the same from those, right. So this was just our first reading of these. And we went, just bring it back for a second. Yep, we'll bring that back next, next time for that. Any other questions or anything, why don't we add that up? I don't think so. They're, they're pretty standard. Okay, so take a look at that and we'll talk about that next week. Here, 606, item 606. This is the one that requires, this, on the third hour, we're going to dive in here. This is our first reading for those policies that IASB has indicated are, deserve a second look for COVID reasons, right? So these are employee leave of absence, talking about the school day, talking about student absences, et cetera. And in some cases, they are brand new. And in that middle section, we simply indicated brand new. In other cases, they closely represent, or closely align with what we have. What makes this tricky, guys, is our numbering doesn't match up. So it's a little wonky on this, and so that's why you'll see a lot more narrative. I wanted to call out one thing for the initial thing, and then I'd also ask Andrew and Lindsay to speak up if they have just... There is one situation where we have within our Gilbert policies, you'll see they have 409.2, which is the second item on this chart, employee leaves of absence. What IASB does is they have one policy, and then they bullet the different reasons for the leave. And maybe you guys know why we did this, but in Gilbert, we have separate policies for each, each bulleted item, and they are identical. So that, the suggestion there in red is just that we could consider going with IASB and going that bulleted approach, and it would allow us to clean up some of our policies. That is true for the employee leaves of absence, and it's the second set for classified, right? For certain, classified? Classified. What, other than that? The recommendations are shown above. There was a couple of interesting things maybe we wanted to call out.
Yeah, maybe go to 907, two?
Yeah, and there's one, two, the student, I think we should, was there anything on the student absences? Okay, what, so down there, sorry. 501.9. So I called out where they, they have added information about the COVID. So this is where a superintendent can, in rare and unusual circumstances, when public emergency has been declared, make remote learning available to students on a case-by-case basis. That was one. The other part was, now, what you say, 601.2 is the school day, and that is where ISB version includes paragraph indicating superintendent will create administrative regulations necessary to utilize remote during like snow or other weather emergencies, right? So that's a difference there to call out. Go ahead, Andrew, you had nine oh.
And that was seven, this was, I was going to mention this to Tyler for John's benefit. During our Wednesday meetings, talked about, you know, what point do we switch? You know, do we shut down the school, do emergencies? And it's either the choice of the school board or the superintendent. And as a committee, we were recommending that it's up to the school board to make that decision. And I think you can, you can read through it, but pretty much do we continue the in-person learning as we have set forth or due to the number, due to the, whatever the state's telling us or the guidelines that will matter, COVID-related illnesses are up. The school board, would that make a decision on whether or not we close the school or not?
Well, we sit down and that first week of August, we're supposed to get some guidance on, you know, what that, that matrix would look like, so we would just look at that at our August meeting. I think that'd be a good item for our August meeting. I think it's good to assess that before it happens because then cooler heads are prevailing and to have that kind of thought through because I'm just fearful of the spike when Iowa State students come back and we have to have that thought through, what's that look like for Gilbert?
And I think, too, that this doesn't state it, but you know what the governor had just indicated then, was that we also have to work in conjunction with, I think, county and state officials. So it wouldn't be just us making this decision, but probably us in concert with...
You just got to go through the D E and Iowa, Iowa Department of Public Health.
Now, that is not, we got these on Wednesday, and I believe that was when the governor came on on Friday, so there's some...
It'll be a little turf.
Meeting, these are going to change.
But I believe that they said August 1st, we should have that. So that's in line with what you're suggesting, John. And then what was the second one?
So in conjunction with that 907, just so, just sharing from that webinar we were on, that also, they also brought up the emergency board meetings can be called with less than 24-hour public notice, i.e. consider shutting down school. Their recommendation is, well, then you give as much notice as possible. But in a scenario like that, it wouldn't have to be, well, we've got to wait. I mean, obviously, the decision's got to be waived.
Yep.
Yep. 907R1 was just the use of our buildings, given the fact that there's, we have, it's just calling out, right? That there's...
Additional cleaning and just one thing else.
Additional, so that we might further restrict the use of our building to non-school activities.
All during this COVID situation?
Yeah, um, yeah, right. I called out, you'll see in here, too, that there's a couple of these policies that actually expire December 31st, and that's called out in here. So just encourage you to take a look at these, there's quite a bit. And here they also indicate that online is attendance just as physical onsite. So there's a lot, a lot of...
Do you know if the December 31st, is that because of the dating of this FFCRA act? Is that, I mean, is there any idea?
That, that Families First Act, that, there's an expiration date on that, and that is December 31st.
Okay.
That's the, so they said if that expired, we should, we need to go in and remove these policies. And I indicated all that. So a lot of good reading, first reading, but I, there's some good stuff in there that I think we need to pay special attention to.
Will it be okay to go to a second reading in August or...
And they actually said, too, that some of that resolution that we passed back in May, I think May-ish, April, that we suspended and we kind of created that new policy, actually does buy us some time to consider these, because this is a rush to get them.
And real quick, Gail, on this family and medical leave notice, you just went through all that recently, right? All this stuffs?
Within the last five years, and we got it all to sync, and we worked with legal counsel on that. So it's working well, and so I wanted to maintain that and, and, and of course, that'll expand with the new regulations. But yeah, I didn't want to totally change things because it's working well. And I, we worked with legal counsel onto getting that policy placed.
So we'll make sure the links and everything are all correct.
Okay.
All right, so those will move on to second reading. 607 on the agenda, consider approve offering voluntary early retirement program, board policy 407.6. So every year at this time, we have this on the agenda. Is there a conversation, Lindsay, or a recommendation?
My recommendation is that we, and I know that this may be different than some of the rest.
I'm having a discussion, yeah.
But we've had this on there for the entire time. I think it's a good option that we have and recommendation we can save that. And I know that there's different ideas on that.
This afternoon, I sent an email to Lindsay and Deb just with, normally, we have a better sense of what our teaching staff looks like. And so making this decision before we know what teachers are coming back and how far in the hole we're going to be next May with regard to, I'm all for providing our teachers, but I'm saying just play with me. If we, we're showing a big number of teachers that have some concerns about coming back to school, and particularly, I could imagine that that's going to be with teachers that are nearing retirement. And so my only thing would be is, is, is from a timing standpoint, do we need to make that decision now? Say, say we're minus 10, minus 15 teachers next spring. Do we want to give five, because it's usually five, is that right, Lindsay? Five positions? Do we want to say, hey, we're going to encourage five people to leave versus, you know, we really don't want to encourage because we need all hands on deck because we're short teachers. And so that was, I, I wouldn't, you know, necessarily dug my heels in, but when I read that, I'm like, well, if I'm, if I'm spitting balling for next spring, I would just be questioning, do we need to make that decision now or can we delay it?
And how late would you want to delay it?
October.
October 1 is the, no earlier than, right? January 15, no later than, so I would, we've got some...
We can delay some.
We don't send anything out until after that, or right before that one?
We would have some time if we wanted to talk about it. So we could just put it back on the schedule with the idea of, you know, hopefully, I'm just being...
And maybe I'll reach out to you about suggestions that way.
It's early, it should be September, or we can even wait till October.
And again, you're not against, you're just saying, let's just hold tight and speak.
I just want to make a decision when I have the maximum amount of information, when I need to make the decision. So, you know, if we're fully staffed and it looks just like it has in the past, I'm all in favor for it, but just, just thought that we may want to have a little more information.
So we will vote that to, I'm likely going to say, yeah, September or October.
October 1, that'll be before our October board meeting.
Okay, so let's vote that, we'll move back to September.
Then that, October 1, where does that come from, Gail?
It's in the board policy.
And that's the minimum date, though.
Yeah, so it's a policy, so we'd have to amend the policy. We changed that date. It's on C application, and eligible employment must be made application.
Well, we'll do a lot more in September.
Let's wait till, yeah, September.
No, we don't know that, I mean...
September 14. So, yep, okay. Okay. Next we have the financial reports. Let's go, why not, right? Why not, right?
I won't take very much time, but just wanna point out a few things that we are, um, my books will remain open until we're in, um, until August, 50 days past June 30th. So we're in, um, we do a gap. So what we're in a gap here is we try to capture as much financial information that we know at that point and, and put it into our book. So our books are opening through August. Um, and so we're during that time and, um, the, uh, so the next four weeks, we're just going to be going through cleaning up some, um, accounts and activity, all funds, um, making sure our, uh, grants are fully utilized and making sure they balance. And, um, so, and then looking at our, um, you know, the information that is in here, you can, what, um, the revenues are lagging, but so much of this is timing because, um, property taxes, um, are paid out, they're June activity, but they're not paid out, they're paid out through August, so we're gonna be capturing that. Tuitions, they're not billed until July 15th. So we've got a lot going on between now and September 1st. So I wanted to mention that along with paying out contracts, we capture, capture them and we, we will expense them out, um, for the next two months. And then one thing I did want to, um, point out is on the secretary's report, the, um, this was just so disheartening. Um, you try to plan and plan and plan and think you have a good plan and I, this is like a trifecta. I mean, it was like perfect storm. We refinanced, we had a big construction project, we're thinking, okay, we've got to amend our budget and I have 600,000 cash of extra in there. Um, and then the Bankers Trust decides to pull out the July 1st payment of $829,000 on June 29th.
So we don't have that.
You can't say, hey, send it back, that's not authorized.
So anyway, the best plan is not always the plan that happens. So I just want to let you know that I will plead my case to the auditors, we'll get a comment, but once you spend, you spend. So at this point, um, I'll plead my case and we did due diligence. We did what we were supposed to do, but we don't have control of every situation as we know when the times were in.
So essentially we were going to say like for this amended budget and that we didn't need to, is that what you're saying?
No, we, we were going to, um, over expense and so we're like, okay, we need to amend it and put more so we don't overspend.
Oh, okay.
Um, on that line items and then the others we did because we refinanced and then.
Got it.
The bottom line was Bankers Trust pulled out a July 1 payment of $829,000 on June 29th.
We budgeted for the next year.
So it was captured, I have to book it.
Right.
It is what it is.
Okay.
And I just wanna mention that because with all that work and that hearing, I'll make sure hearing.
When we get that on hand.
Yeah, so, um, and there was, oh, and I added some, a little bit of end of the year food service information on, um, just, uh, accounts negatives, just a little bit of information that was out there. Other than that bills, um, there's mainly payroll and tuitions. Next month will be a lot more tuition pay and receives because they weren't due until July 15th. So any questions, concerns?
Gail, what's kinda, what's kinda your preliminary numbers as to what our COVID tally is running so far, knowing that it's only going one direction, but what do you see in there?
Well, and we were just talking about this, I plan on keeping you updated on that. We're doing a lot of purchasing right now, but we haven't been doing a lot of pay. So, but all, anything, uh, so, you know, like, uh, the recommendations of hiring additional staff, um, and things like that, we will be coding, anything unusual related to this will be COVID. So I will bring that data to you on maybe a quarterly basis as we, we won't probably see a lot of the hitting on books until September, just the timing of billing and stuff, but we are tracking them and coding it. So it will be information I will bring to you just so we can, um, you know.
And will we be reimbursed for some of those expenses or we're not certain all that's in order?
I have not heard any more than, uh, the CARES Act that we received $23,000. I have not heard any more, but today there was something about.
Was it Gears?
The administration heard about Gears.
Yeah, I don't know.
I have not heard that at all.
That's the name of the program?
But the unusual thing to that, John, is that we have report that's due November 1st, we have to report our savings to the Department of it. Our savings.
That's not good.
Which is very ironic, our savings.
A lot of wanting to spend it for you, Gail.
Yeah, our savings, savings.
They wanna know how much money you have.
Um, I would only, the savings would be, for example, if you furloughed staff.
Uh huh. We didn't do that. Savings on electricity costs.
Yes, fuel. Ours would be minimal because really it's staffing and we didn't, we made the obligation of taking it. So that's the unusual thing is we have to report our savings. So we are tracking those and I will report back to the board on that as they, cause like it's, it's good information.
Savings from our budget or is it how much money we have on deposit or both?
I think it's a savings of basically what we expected to spend. So it'd be our line item budget.
Okay, okay, well, that makes me feel better.
That's better.
More, more information to come about how we are to report it, but that's not due until November 1st. So yeah, it's, it's, um, interesting and, and everybody's like, well, there is no additional, any of these additional expenses are coming out of the budget that we will already have in place. So there's no additional funding that we're aware of at this point in time and we haven't heard any more about any of that.
Would it, would it be a lot of this be temple stuff then?
Um, some of it, we have to meet the threshold of the requirements for the reporting, you know, like, uh, but a lot of it's instructional, um, and under $500. But anything over $500 and.
Like Plexiglas is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, that's not individual, so that would be, um, but let me see the bill first. The bill will determine where we.
Well, we aggregate them.
And like we say, it's COVID 19 time, right?
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Okay, um, last item before the consent agenda, we wanted to consider approved payment for required work related to reopening plan. Um, Lindsay, I don't know if you wanted to talk about this?
Yeah, I was just gonna let her get this up here.
There we go.
Can you get that a little, thank you. One of the things that, uh, we looked at, I, I know that just from talking to some of the board members, the, um, it was very much appreciated administrative team. I know some of you are there, some of you are not, uh, because of the long hours and the extra days and just all the different things that have gone along with this COVID situation. And so what we tried to do is put up, uh, a recommendation here for what would be basically some, the extra work that you had to put in trying to compensate for that. This is, uh, I believe on a, a five days extra. I don't know, you probably put in, I don't know how many hours and, and days, uh, but I think that the board really wanted to, uh, and I, I don't wanna talk to the board so they can definitely jump in here, but they very much appreciated the fact of all the things that you had to go through, uh, and the, the work, where we're at now would not have been accomplished if we wouldn't have had the, you know, the people, uh, that are right there on the screen and right here in front of me. Uh, but you can kinda see what, what this is. This is, uh, on a per diem basis. Um, it looks, uh, from the standpoint of, you can kinda see where that's at as far as where your per diem is, what the, uh, the five additional days would be. And, uh, one of the things that is a little bit different on Carrie's is the fact that how she, how they break her out. Um, what I did was I looked at that situation and made that into, uh, she was the one that was the head facilitator on, um, return to learn, reopening, uh, what else, what they call it, a lot of things.
Return to learn and now reopening.
Okay. Uh, but I guess the, the fact of it is, is I wanted to make it as equal as possible for that administrative team. And so what I did with hers was since she was a .5 administrator on this docket, next year I think it's a .9, uh, I put that as a 10 day. So the recommendation is that it's the additional five days that you see there, you can see the number at the bottom, um, of what you're talking about. I, I guess what I'm trying to say, I think that I would say, and they probably will echo is thank you very much for all your hard work and effort. I know there's days when it's very frustrating. I know there's times when you go, jeez. I, I, I don't know if we're gonna get the right answer, we may have to meet another time and another time and another time, but thank you very much, uh, on, for my behalf. And I don't know if you guys wanna say anything.
One thing I wanted to call out, a couple of things. So I got, I kind of was the one who was the most nervous about this and not for any reason, like of course appreciation through the gills on this. I think everybody has stepped up and done so much. Um, I sometimes worry that we're not gonna catch everybody who's put in a lot of extra. And I know that the teachers have an opportunity who have participated to put in hours for their time. Um, the one thing I would comment on and I'll tell you, this is just based off of a, of some experiences that I have had. One evening at 7:30 reaching out, and in fact, anytime that I contact, I know Gail has been putting in tremendous number of hours, stuck up here at 7:30 one evening.
In the bathroom.
In the bathroom. But my question is, are we just, are we, I know that there's differences in the number of days, but is there, was there consideration or, you know, I'm not trying to.
Well, there's more than, than people listed here.
There's more than people listed here.
But isn't it, my understanding, so I'm very supportive of this. I don't know if it's enough, I don't know if it'll pay you enough for everything that you've been doing administrative team. Let me just stay, say that. My understanding is there is an opportunity for the others to get paid on an hourly basis.
Yes.
They turn in their time, like.
The teachers, yep. Yep, yep, their curriculum.
So as long as they're doing that and I would encourage them to do that, as long as they're doing that, including you, Ashley, um, then, then I feel comfortable with this.
If this is presented.
Can I, um, and this is, this is not my deal, obviously, I wanna say thank you, but that's not what I was gonna say. Um, I don't know, like what Jason wondered, your, what are your days? Or what is your.
Two point.
I mean, I'm gonna tell you, Jason's put in a ton of hours, but that, I'm just throwing that out.
So is that not part of the hourly?
Well, see, the thing is Jason doesn't, doesn't, doesn't categorize as a teacher. I can, from the PD funds, I, I don't approve that. I approve, and I constantly send that out to teachers and say, make sure you get your hours into me, make sure you get your hours in me. I get that to Gail for the August pay period, but that's, that's my route, so.
We're going down a slippery slope. I mean, I just don't really, honestly don't wanna go down it right now because I just, it, where's it stop? I mean, everybody's gonna put in more hours, more time. I'm all for this, I, Advent team, you guys have done great. Um, I really, I, I feel a little uncomfortable talking about this just because again, I don't know where it stops. At what point do you say, well, Carrie, every single person in this community is gonna put in more time?
Oh, I agree. I'm one hundred percent agree with that.
I try to just get a little, I mean, I, it's almost like, what I don't wanna come up on this and say, well, these six people or above and beyond. I mean, again, I, I'm all for this, I will not put a halt to this, I just wanna be careful. We're not setting a precedent going forward. That's my only comment.
Part of my thinking on it, Andrew, is, is that are these, these people are the ones that are gonna be taking arrows for the things that happen and I have no problem adding Jason to the list. I know that the technology list is huge and I know the list for everyone else is gonna be huge too, but I'm hopefully that they're getting compensated at $25 an hour and that's at least, you know, to reach out to them. But there's a difference between being the policymaker and, 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 you know, following the policy and trying to make the policy better and all the built with that. But, but, uh, the fact is, is, is they're, they're not paid for their July work and this is an effort to try and pay them for that. And I get it that it's probably not, you know, it, it's very difficult to make these decisions and make everyone come away positively, but I would rather be mostly right than completely wrong.
Yeah, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you Advent team for all your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know, and I probably meant to bring it up earlier on the reopening, but, um, it's not for emotion, maybe we can say it's kind of with work related reopening, but we've talked about, is there a gap with regard to a point person for COVID mitigation, right? And, and this isn't for a vote tonight, so it doesn't, but, um, I would like to just throw out for consideration that we have absolute clarity of a point person for COVID mitigation in the industry. I think that would have been helpful coming into tonight, it would have probably made our conversation a little bit cleaner and quicker rather than, you know, I'll take some of the blame, but as a board member kinda going, well, we need to get through this, right? And one example that I will use is we had Les White come and join us by Zoom for the work session, cause I talked to her and, and I thought that was helpful, but then she starts replying back to me with information for the district and I'm going, hold on. So then, so then Deb and I had a kind of a conversation and so I would like to throw out the idea, and I don't know what that looks like, so it would be something for the, for Lindsay and the Advent team to come back, but COVID mitigation point person, and I know that Ashley led the Health and Safety Committee and I, I think that's something that she's probably well positioned for, but I, I just think for, for the board, let alone the Advent team, we need some clarity there. And I guess I just wanna make sure we had that out on the table.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to see that added to the, the August, um, conversations about some clarity on who, who those, those people are. And then also if there are others that they, you know, are there others externally that we can reach out that they can also.
Because the context will be, just because I've been through this, is the context is gonna be, the phone's gonna be ringing at eight o'clock in the morning and this person has it, this teacher has it. Okay, it's not the specific thing that we laid out in how we gain this and so we need to make a call on how that's gonna work and so that then we adjust and adapt our, our procedures and policies because this thing is a moving target. And so you have to have that central clearinghouse of, okay, we had this at the middle school, so Stacy, here's, here's what it looks like, I've, I've seen this before and this is how we should go, what do you think of that? And so just to give you a guise of what this is going to look like is, is there's a lot of, uh, game playing as things happen because it's just not black and white and, and it's, it's a bit, it's a bit of having a, a kind of the, the expert and then the group that they can feel comfortable collaborating with of, I am with the person that's best able to advise me in this situation for my building.
And that's, and it's not meant to take any authority away from the principals and their authority in that building, it's a resource, it's a common district resource. And, and so I think there would need to be some thought put into it, but it just seems like over the last couple of weeks that, that's a gap.
Yep, I agree. So I think that that would, that should just be called out specifically so that we have clear understanding. And I really, I think it's enough of a job too, for just my opinion, it's enough of a job, it's really difficult to absorb, everybody to absorb a piece of it, let's just be.
And how it works, good for you. You need to get updated, so okay, here's how it's going.
So we can add that to that.
Pick me back up.
You don't want somebody doing it.
I know, I'm trying, I know, I'll get out of here too. The communication piece too, obviously everything coming out tonight, everything's gonna come out. I'd like to see at some point maybe a weekly Friday afternoon update or something, just letting the, one staff needs to know what's going on, but just for parents, here's some things we've done, here's some, here's pictures of the Plexiglas, here's some things in the bathrooms, here, just so that we're getting, the anxiety's gonna crank up as this becomes more real. And we can bring that down and get the comfort level for these parents, and again, staff as well, I don't know what it looks like, um, how about just the more, the better. If it's by school.
I would say the more often, but not necessarily the number.
Correct.
I would be mindful of situations when we don't have to send, as a parent with kids in multiple buildings, I don't need to receive X many.
And I'm not, I'm not envisioning three pages, I'm just envisioning pictures, I can say anything. You know, just boom, here's a, here's what a kindergarten classroom's gonna look like, all done, or here's this, or here's what the, you got the face masks in, here's the face mask for the, for the elementary school. Again, just quick hits.
Good communication will make people feel safe.
We want, we want them to feel good about sending their kids back.
And I think especially once we do get started, I think that weekly update, here's, we, we had a good first two days, here's kind of a summary, here's again, reiterating what our mitigation, you know, strategy is.
Yeah, I think that's key. Okay, um, so those will be for, we'll discuss in August. Last on our agenda, consent agenda. Is there anything that we would like to pull out of here to discuss?
I move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, consent agenda is passed.
The thing on the August 10th meeting, and I think it was brought up previous to this one, but, you know, at what point do we go back to a more normal?
Yes, I wanted to, thank you for bringing that up and this was something that I had intended to bring up during the conversations that we had before. I have received numerous emails about this and I honestly could not agree with them more. As a board, we have approved safety mitigation and it feels appropriate that we begin to follow the same mitigation that we have. That means, I think we need to get a couple of people maybe together and talk about this. What does this mean for the August 10th board meeting? I think there are situations where we can employ the same mitigation we would put in the classrooms and, and allow some level of public seating.
That's perfect, so.
So we can talk about what that specifically means and what that looks like, but.
We got moved into different rooms?
We can, we are no different than anybody else.
Yeah, and we could go into a bigger room.
Yeah.
We can go into a bigger room and, and that might be a good thing so we can.
I don't know how many people want to be in there, but, I mean, great point, great opportunity to showcase barriers, masks if we need to, whatever.
If history is any indication, I mean, it's not like we're talking huge crowds or.
I will take that offline as a, as an action item and I'll work with Ashley, whoever, that we want to from the schools to, to help us understand what that can look like, like with a bigger setting, okay? Thank you for letting me do that, that's very key. Next on the item, we have, August 10th is the regular board meeting, so again, we'll be looking at some items that have moved there, so it'll be a full agenda as well, but hopefully not this fall. And then September 14th is our annual meeting and also some people are keeping track of that.
Okay.
Is there a motion, can I take a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.